Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Cleveland Heights University Heights Special School Board Meeting. Mr. Gaynor, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Posh?
Here.
Mr. Hanks?
Here.
Ms. Reedy?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Malia, you're breaking up.
I'm not hearing anything.
So we just called the roll, Malia.
I didn't hear it, but I am here.
Yes. Gotcha.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We have actually just a few agenda items. I would like to try to get through them as quickly as possible. But before we begin, I'd like to start the meeting with a special recognition. In our monthly regular meetings, we allocate time to recognize staff and student achievements. Today, at the start of this special meeting, I'd like to take a moment for this board to recognize an important partner, and these are our dedicated parents and families of our students. They deserve a lot of credit for balancing the needs of their households, managing their jobs, supporting their students, and helping them navigate the challenges of remote learning and keeping everybody around them safe. This has been a very challenging time for all of us. We know these challenges impact the lives of our parents and families. And with each challenge, we've had to navigate curveballs, competing interests, roadblocks. Our parents and families have also been forced to navigate these with us. And I know for some, it's been difficult, and I'm sorry we don't have a normal year. I'm hopeful as COVID cases count continue to decrease and with the vaccine on the horizon, we can move forward. It's still not going to be normal, but I'm optimistic it's going to get better. So I wanted to take this moment to recognize our parents and thank them. And I'm obviously saying this now because I feel just kind of revisiting a lot of our old meetings, we don't give our parents and families enough credit. So, thank you very much. I would like to move forward with the agenda, but does anybody have any comments they'd like to add to that?
Yeah, Jim, I would also like to thank parents. I know it's been a stressful, you know, gosh, 10, 11 months. And I also would like to thank particularly our small businesses in the area who are employers for their flexibility. A lot of the parents that have reached out to me have said that, you know, not only have they struggled, but they wouldn't have been able to do what they did if their employers hadn't been flexible. So I don't know how many employers watch these meetings, but in addition to thanking the parents for all that they have been through, if you're an employer and you've been flexible with your workforce, I'd also like to thank that group as well. Thank you.
Yeah, we have had so many notes over these past months from folks who were just working their tails off to keep things going for our kids. You know, we've had study groups, sort of communities leaning in on each other and for each other. And we've had, you know, grandparents helping out. It's really been a very, in many ways, a very beautiful example of who we are here in the Heights of just folks getting things done. But there have been an awful lot of folks doing amazing selfless work over the past few months, above and beyond our fantastic teachers. So you're very, I'm thrilled that you mentioned that, Jim. It's a really important thing for us to all recall.
Well, I'm going to move on. We have three items that we're going to be working on this evening. We have a quick consent agenda that we need to get approved. We have Ms. Kirby's reopening update. And I'd like to add an agenda item at the end, a board discussion about returning in-person to public meetings. First, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I motion, we consider the consent.
I second.
We've had this information in advance of the meeting, but is there any discussion? Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Hanks?
Yes.
Ms. Reedy?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Moving on, Liz, would you go into the reopening update for us?
Yes, I will. I know Kathan will run our presentation this evening, so I'll give him a moment to get that loaded up. But good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us again tonight. We have, this is one of many reopening updates that we have been giving over the course of the year as we have sought to develop and implement our instructional program during the challenging time of COVID-19. Everyone who is in this meeting and everyone who is watching this meeting knows how complex and challenging this has been for us this year. And I really appreciate all of the feedback, thought partnership, and most important flexibility during this year. It has been very difficult for our parents. We thank them. It has been very difficult for our administrators, our certified teachers, certified staff, classified staff, board employees, community stakeholders, students. It's just been a really challenging time, and I thank everyone for hanging in there as we manage the year. Today, we're going to share some updates on our transition to hybrid instruction presentation. We do have some guests that are joining us this evening, and after the first couple of opening slides, I will introduce who our guests are this evening. So we're going to look at the current COVID-19 data, the updated guidance from the Cuyahoga County Board of Health, have a discussion with our guest speakers. And then for our guest speakers, after that discussion, feel free to stay in the meeting if you'd like, but I know that you're very, very busy. But we will continue with the rest of the program after that, and you can certainly jump off. I'll share some updates on the vaccine. We'll do updates around operations and our educational plan. And then I'll share my recommendations. I also added a slide just for the board discussion on the future meetings, just to make sure that we kept that top of mind. Then we'll close out.
Liz?
Yeah.
I hate to interrupt you. This presentation isn't up on Word docs, and can we just commit to, at least at the end of the presentation or at the end of our meeting tonight, that we get it up so our, so the members of the community have access to the same stuff?
We can actually get it up now. So we'll do that.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, because there is definitely a lot of information in here, and we want people to be able to follow along. So I will make sure we get that. All right. So this slide here shows you the current risk level. This is aligned to the Ohio Department of Health Advisory System. As of January 28th, we just received this data. Our county still remains in red, and we have met of the seven indicators, two of the seven indicators. I know this looks familiar. We look at this just about every time we have these meetings. We go to the next slide. The next slide just gives a little bit more information. And as you guys know, the one indicator that we pay, we really play, pay attention to is the cases per 100,000. I know Suzanne Rush is on the call with us from the Board of Health, is quite familiar with all of these. And so we did, we did experience a decrease from last week. Last week was also a decrease from the previous week in terms of COVID spread. There you also see the other counties, other trends as well. So in our neighboring counties, we had an increase in Giada, and then Lake Portage and Summit also had decreases. This slide here just kind of gives the context of what the COVID-19 academic plan across the state looks like. And so, you know, it's different. It's different in the state. It's different in our county. It's different county to county. And this is updated as of today. Forty-six percent of Ohio schools are in a five-day in-person academic structure. So all the students, well, the students who choose to are coming five days a week. Thirty-six percent of Ohio schools are in hybrid instructional models where you have smaller groups of students coming throughout the week. And seventeen percent of Ohio schools are fully remote. One thing that everyone is aware of is the letter of intent around returning by March 1st. And in our state, the governor did allow educators to be prioritized for the vaccine if the districts made the commitment for a return by March 1st. And I can tell you, it was surprising to me, but only one school in the state has not signed that letter of intent to return in person. Just as relates to the first ring, and those are the school districts that surround us and surround the Cleveland Metropolitan School District. Ninety percent of the districts have plans to implement hybrid learning by mid-February, and seventy percent have already started to implement either hybrid or five-day-a-week learning. So again, you know, this gives us the context around us, the context of the state. As you know, the Cuyahoga County Board of Health extended their stay-at-home advisory through January 31st. But last week, the Board of Health shared some updated guidance with schools. The thing to note in particular is that they advise districts that they can begin to transition to five-day-a-week or hybrid instruction models if they could align with the health guidance. And this language was in some ways superseding the language of the advisory in that schools, though the advisory through the 31st and the 22nd, schools were informed they could start that transition. I know some schools did make some adjustments because of that. We decided to remain in remote learning through the 31st in accordance with the original stay-at-home advisory. So some specific language that I want to reference here, this paragraph comes out of that guidance. And you'll see italicize the following statement. "We understand that schools may move toward this goal at a pace that works for their respective districts based on their ability to adhere to the mitigation strategies recommended by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the Ohio Department of Public Health." Then they note that the timeframe allows for incubation periods from, you know, the holidays, celebrations, family gatherings, things that happen during the holidays. This guidance also notes that schools can resume sports and other extracurricular activities as well. So the question that I want us to spend some time discussing and hearing actually from health experts is that question that is on the bottom of this page. What needs to be in place for schools in CHUH, that's the Cleveland Heights University High School District, for our guests to begin the transition to hybrid instruction? What does the research indicate? So we have guest speakers, actually four guest speakers with us this evening. We have Dr. Smith, who is from Duke University, a health practitioner. A Dr. Meyer, who is a doctor here in the Cleveland area through Metro Health. Many of you all are familiar with Dr. Meyer because she also works and is a partner with us in our clinic that is at the high school. We have Suzanne Rush from the Cuyahoga County Board of Health. Suzanne works with schools around practices, protocols, information related to COVID-19. You have often heard me refer to the Friday calls with districts from across the county. Suzanne is one of the health practitioners on that call, sharing data, offering guidance, answering questions. Suzanne, also, when we started to bring back our students that have intensive needs, she did meet with the group of our teachers, our teachers in specialized services, those are intervention specialists. Suzanne is also joined by, I believe it's Kevin Brennan, Suzanne from the Board of Health as well this evening. And before we begin, I just want to thank all of our speakers for, oh, Suzanne, it's so nice to see you. I want to thank all of our speakers for being with us tonight. I know you are incredibly busy, especially now. And I just appreciate you adjusting your schedule so that we had an opportunity to get to get some information from you. So I'm actually going to ask Dr. Smith, and we can go through your presentation, Dr. Smith, to first kind of take us through his background and his research. One thing that I do want to kind of frame this around, Dr. Meyer introduced me to an opportunity to partner with, you know, health professionals, doctors, infectious disease specialists, epidemiologists, a team of folks coming out of Duke University. We're exploring that partnership now, and I thought it would be great after having spoke with both Dr. Smith and Dr. Meyer to have the board and the community hear some of the information that I'm hearing. So, Dr. Smith, I'm going to turn it over to you to take us briefly through your presentation, and we'll come back to that opening question.
Great, thank you so much. So I can hear you guys crystal clear. Can someone just tell me if you can hear me? Okay, great. And I think you guys gave me screen sharing. So that is good. Hey, one second. Okay, cool. So, okay. Can, oh, I'm not used to Google. Can you all see my PowerPoint? It says ABC Science Collaborative?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Sorry, Emma. We use Zoom a lot here, and each one, as I'm sure you know, each one of these is a little bit different. Yeah, so thank you so much for that introduction, and thank you for explaining why I'm here talking to you. Just before I do my presentation, a little background about me. My name is Mike Smith. I am a professor of pediatrics here at Duke University. My clinical training is in pediatric infectious diseases and epidemiology. And as, I'm also the parent of two children, one of whom you could probably hear screaming in the background. He's the three-year-old who has been in in-person preschool since July. And so as a parent, I understand the fear of sending your kid out into the world these days. I get that. We also have an older daughter who is in elementary school, and she's been in remote learning since March 2020. So I understand the frustrations and limitations of remote learning. So I kind of have a nice perspective, you know, as a parent, as well as a pediatrician and infectious disease doc. And I'm going to tell you about our program, but just to be crystal clear upfront, this information is the most up-to-date, data-driven, evidence-based science to help school districts make important decisions. And if we do kind of follow through with our hope to work with you all formally, I'll still use this slide at every meeting. And just to be clear, that Duke and its partners will never make decisions, nor will we advise any specific action. We'll always defer to the district as well as state and local public health department. So a little bit about our program. As pediatricians, we feel that the need for school attendance, while understanding the risk factors associated with COVID-19, is an urgent, unmet public health need, and that schools need up-to-date information about the best way to do this safely in ways that will make it safe for teachers, staff, and children. And we really need to feel safe about this. And this is really kind of our guiding principle. So our work so far has focused on questions we get from parents. How can we keep our children safe and healthy at school? Teachers, principals, and superintendents. And really, our project is funded by the NIH. So that's the most important thing here. I'm not here to sell you anything. Our project is funded whether or not we ultimately work together or not. There's no cost to join the program. And we're made up of public health scientists and physicians who are affiliated with Duke School of Medicine, the Duke Clinical Research Institute, and the University of North Carolina School of Medicine. Program really started in here last summer in the local area around Duke University. And now we have a team of about 14 individuals, and we partner with about 55 districts across the state of North Carolina. And if we've gone forward with our program, we've also started to reach with partners across the country in different states. So Dr. Meyer has been on some of my calls from the fall, seeing kind of how we do things here in North Carolina. We're working in other states such as Michigan, Kentucky, Georgia, California, and that's why I'm here talking to you today. So the goals of our program are really threefold. The first one is simply education. And whether or not we ultimately work together or not, please feel free to visit our website, abc-sciencecollaborative.org. There's lots of useful information there for schools, for principals, for superintendents, about how you can open schools safely. Our second goal is what we call informed, evidence-based decision-making. When I put superintendent lifeline, I say, we're here, my superintendents that I work with, I work with about 25 superintendents in North Carolina. They know how to get ahold of me with questions. We have bi-weekly meetings with groups of superintendents, so we can kind of hear from each other what's going well. And sometimes, like this week, there's been a lot in the media, and I do most of the talking. Other weeks, when we talk about how do you, how do you open safely? How do you go from remote to hybrid learning? That's where the superintendents really lead those conversations. It's just a nice way to learn from each other. We work closely with state health departments and have several stakeholder association liaisons for here in North Carolina. That's the North Carolina Association of Educators, most importantly. And so that's our second goal. And our third goal really is advancing public health. And this is something we can talk about if we do decide to work together moving forward. We have an app that you can use to help with symptom tracking, not only to help each individual student decide whether it's safe to go to school or not, but then that comes back to a dashboard. So the district, the district level, you can know who's quarantined, who has a positive test, if you choose, who's been vaccinated. And of course, we can collect data from the districts that work with us, so we can share with the other districts across the country what works well, what doesn't work well when you're trying to open up schools. So just a couple of things that we've learned so far. And this model here, we call it the Swiss cheese model. It's actually not new. I don't know how well this transmits, but you can see it's from 1990. It's something that we use in infectious diseases a lot. And the point is that no single intervention is perfect at preventing spread, but you really need to do multiple approaches to improve success. So here in North Carolina, we call them the three Ws. First one is probably the most important is wear a mask. That's the first W. And the second one is to wait and social distance by about six, you know, six feet. And the third big one is really the hand washing. And as we move forward, I heard that there's a plan to vaccinate teachers. I'd say that's like another fourth layer. And the idea here that is, if you think of the Swiss cheese, none of these in and of itself is perfect and is going to reduce by 100% the likelihood of disease transmission. But when you layer them on top of each other, disease transmission is actually very low, not zero, but very low. When we first started this, there were data at a Brown University, this is from October, suggesting that schools did not, in fact, appear to be major spreaders of COVID-19. And really, across the world, where COVID was seen really before it was here in the state. So data from China, France, and Australia suggesting that schools are not areas where disease is transmitted at high rates. And again, the thought was that transmission in schools may be less important than initially feared. And I'll be the first to admit, you know, when this first started, we thought SARS-CoV-2, the virus that causes COVID, it was going to be like influenza. Influenza happens every year, and schoolchildren are definitely the key components of transmission. And we know that every winter break, when you close schools, flu tends to slow down. That's clearly not what we've seen in COVID this year. And though it's a really encouraging data out of the United States, these are data from Mississippi published in the CDC MMWR Journal. They looked at children who tested positive for COVID as compared to those who didn't, and found that the positive children were more likely to have attended gatherings like weddings, parties, playdates, and funerals, kind of out in the community, but they were not more likely to have attended childcare or school in person. In the meantime, we were doing data of our own with some of these districts I mentioned earlier. So we partnered with 54 districts, not all of whom are open. In North Carolina, we call it Plan A, which is kind of back to the old normal, where you had most kids in school. A Plan B, if you hear me mention that, refers to our hybrid model. And then Plan C refers to all remote learning. Just, that's kind of some, some North Carolina terminology. So for this study that was just published in the Journal of Pediatrics last week, which is the Journal of the American Academy of Pediatrics, we used data from 11 of those districts who were in Plan B or the hybrid model and able to contribute data to us. These included 90,000 children and adults from across the state, big districts, small districts, urban districts, rural districts, primarily white districts, primarily African-American districts, kind of really a whole hodgepodge. There, we found 773 primary infections, and that means that students or staff members had acquired COVID in the community and came to school. Our outcome really was, what about secondary transmission? Which is, there's not so much you can do at the school level if someone out in the community acquires COVID, but what schools can do is work as hard as possible to prevent secondary transmission within the school. And that's really our goal. And despite the fact that there were 773 infections, there were only 32 confirmed secondary transmission. Now, we worked with local departments of health to kind of adjudicate those, but 32 cases among this population, 90,000, that were, that were thought to be and confirmed to be due to spreads in schools. And I talked earlier about the importance of planning and the importance of masking. When we went back and looked at these, a lot of them were due to lapses in masking. And again, it was really across the spectrum of age. We know that high school students, the closer you are to an adult, the more likely you are to transmit. There were a couple of cases of, you know, teenagers not following the rules, because that's what teenagers do. On the other hand, there were, you know, fourth and fifth grade, fourth and, four- and five-year-olds who were just not wearing the mask because they didn't know any better. There was not a clear age distribution. I think most importantly, because we really want to make sure our teachers are protected, there was not a single case in this whole group of child-to-adult transmission. So our research that we've done has shown that a couple of things. Higher rates of COVID in the community did not impact secondary transmission. There's really no, no difference in transmission within the school, whether there were a high level of cases. And I saw your numbers earlier. One of the districts was, was at 900 cases per 100,000 at the time of the study. And we found that with adherence to the three Ws, secondary transmission is low. And, you know, we found that schools do a good job protecting their students and staff, and this is not surprising. This is what educators do. We keep our kids safe. However, one of the things that we've learned now, just as I heard, you know, the choice of March 1 in Ohio, that a critical mass of staff is needed to keep schools open safely. So right now in North Carolina, a lot of our districts are back in remote. They're not permanently in remote, but they're back in remote learning because a lot of people, specifically the teachers you need to keep schools open safely, and the bus drivers you need to get kids to school, got sick with COVID over the holidays and are currently quarantining. It's, they're not closed because of disease transmission in the schools. And then just this week, this is my last slide, there's just really an encouraging paper out of Wisconsin, where they looked at 17 K-12 schools in rural Wisconsin, where they all use masks. They have these pods, 11 to 20 students, maintain distance of six feet and quarantined after exposure. And the students really did a good job with masking. You know, more than 92% of students use masks consistently. And during 13 weeks of in-person learning, they've, they've only found seven of just under 5,000 students, and zero of the staff members were known to have gotten COVID-19 at school. And this is really important to me because, you know, it's a different research group coming to the same conclusion that we came to. And again, the rates in some of these counties were even higher than what I mentioned. They said 40% of tests in some, in one of these communities were positive. So again, this message that no spread is known to have occurred to or from staff in school, despite sometimes a high community spread. So when you put this all together, I think our own research goes along with research that we're seeing in other states like Mississippi and Wisconsin that show that, you know, with a plan, schools can open safely. And I'll stop there with that introduction, see what questions you all have. And again, at this point, as I said, we're exploring a potential relationship with you all, so I can't give you official recommendations, but happy to answer kind of general questions about what we've learned and about the epidemiology of COVID in the school setting.
Before we do that, Dr. Smith, I would also ask Suzanne from the Board of Health, just to give your response to that question around, what do districts have to have in place in order to align with the Board of Health guidance on that transition to in-person learning timeline? Because I know you have a lot of that local context as well.
Sure. Thanks.
Sure. Elizabeth, we actually, Kevin and I have been working extensively with schools, private and public, charter, I mean, you name it, every kind of school. And before we say the answer to the question, we just want to say how much we admire you guys. I know you've heard it from a lot of public health people. I think you're going to hear it from a lot of parents. They have had to put up with everything that you put up with for years and years, and they are realizing what a challenging job it is to educate children. We all commend you. Kevin and I teach at several colleges. We're adjunct professors, and we know how hard it is with adults, a lot of children. So thank you very much for the work that you do. We're happy to be with you. Kevin Brennan is our communications officer, and he and I have been working diligently with schools. And to answer that question, Dr. Smith, hit it on the head. There are mitigation strategies that will help us get back to school safely. And we believe schools have demonstrated that they can do those mitigation strategies. The big five, of course, are going to be health screenings, right? We've talked the whole time about health screenings. If someone is symptomatic, they don't come to school, be that a child or an adult in any facet, right? They stay home. The second thing, of course, hand hygiene, mask wearing, social distancing, and disinfecting social distancing and disinfecting high-touch surfaces. And you've all seen the signs with those K through, K through 12 signs that we've given out, those blue ones for years and years. The only really great thing that we're excited about now is vaccine will be available. And we're going to talk with you about how we have to be patient and we have to be diligent and we have to promote vaccine, vaccine uptake and to overcome hesitancy. And a lot of people have a lot of really good questions and we're poised. And we have a group of physicians we're working with. Hopefully Dr. Meyer and Dr. Smith would reinforce the fact that the need for vaccination is great. And we know there's hesitancy in many communities and we think schools are going to be a way to get to the heart of families. We got to get back to the family values of keeping others safe, the patriotic values that we do as Americans to protect others. So if you engage in those mitigation strategies, lots of science and research is out there, many white papers we've been reading. If those are done properly, kids can return to school safely, teachers can return to school safely.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over now to, to board members for questions. I have a couple of questions, but I want to make sure you guys are able to, to address our guests.
I have a question about this app and quarantining and managing that. And it's maybe something Liz that we need to go over later on in this presentation. But I mean, it seems to me a logistical nightmare, you know, trying to manage someone that was exposed and making sure that they're not coming into the building and they've gone through their whole quarantining process. And maybe some of our parents and students really don't understand the value and why they need to quarantine, or maybe even staff members. You know, how do we overcome that, that education just to make sure people understand all this?
Well, I actually can answer this question because we are going to address the quarantine process. Dr. Lombardo has been following that for the district and following the guidance that's coming out of the state as relates to quarantining. You guys know there have been some changes to that, that guidance in terms of the exposure and who has to quarantine and for how long. Suzanne, if you could address that, that kind of change quarantine guidance. I know you have that at the tip of your tongue. I do not.
Sure thing, sure thing. So traditionally, and by traditionally, I mean for less than a year since we started pandemic response, we've been suggesting what the state and science showed us, which was 14 days. That was originally what we said for quarantine. And just to refresh, isolation is for persons who are sick. Quarantine is for persons who were exposed to people who were sick, right? They aren't sick themselves, or at least not symptomatic at that point, or maybe haven't been tested yet. So quarantine period 14 days was recommended unless the person was a close contact in a household who could not significantly quarantine. And I'll give you an example. I'm a single mom, let's say, and I have three kids and I'm the sole caretaker for my children. I'm going to suggest a 16-day quarantine because there would be multiple exposures more than just one point of contact, like if it was a coworker versus in my household. But other than that, 14 days was the rule. And then a significant amount of research went in. I wish there had been even more, but everybody in COVID times is doing things more quickly. And a number of school districts, I believe it was nine school districts, signed up to be part of a study with the state of Ohio. And that research showed that people were most communicable in those first 10 days. And they're most likely to have been exposed and shows, show symptoms in those first 10 days. So actually, I'm sorry, most communicable in the first three to four days after exposure. But, but most symptoms appeared 10, up to 10 days. So they changed the guidance so that you can do a 10-day quarantine after an exposure to a COVID positive person. Or if the person gets a negative test, either antigen or PCR test, they could do a seven-day quarantine. Be honest, we at the Board of Health are still suggesting 14 days. And the reason we are is because we've still seen a number of cases. We're doing the contact tracing and the case calls, right? And we're still seeing a number that are happening 12, 13, 14 days in. So we're still recommending the 14. You certainly can choose a different method if you are tracking that method carefully and you're consistent. What we don't want school districts to do is person A, they only have to do it seven days with a negative test. Person B, 10 days for that kid. That kid wasn't as good with the mask wearing. Oh, and these two kids over here, they've been trouble from the get-go, so let's make them do quarantine. We would like schools to use a policy, have it in writing, and be consistent with parents so that everybody's getting the same message.
Thank you. Me, I have a question that I've received from our staff as we've worked on getting ready to welcome our students back. Questions about what do you do with lunch? How do kids eat lunch? What should schools have in place for those type of opportunities when the kids are not, you know, in instruction with their mask on? They would need to take their masks off to eat. So thoughts on that from either of you? We can start with you, Dr. Smith, because I know there was something on your website about this.
Yeah, so we're, lunches is, is a probably the most important piece in all this, in our opinion. Because I think, I think masks are so important that when you honestly can't drink water or put food in your mouth with a mask on. So before you're going to allow a child or a teacher take their mask on, you need to be really sure that, you know, again, I'm sorry, I have a thing for the Swiss cheese model. That the, that the other, that the other pieces of cheese there, all these other mitigation strategies are in place. So there are variable different ways you can do that, but you need to have a clear protocol in plan for how you're going to do lunch. So depending on the size of the class, one of the more common things that we've seen in the districts that, that we work with is, you know, either the food is brought into a classroom and the students stay at their desk. That's probably the easiest way to do that because ideally you're going to have the, the classrooms, you know, so it's the, the desks are six feet apart. So there's, there's no way for someone to kind of enter your personal space while you're, you know, while you're eating. We're also not a big fan. I, I know there's this whole question about how well children can tolerate masks. I, I mentioned I have a three-year-old who's in preschool. He loves his mask. He, he's better at it than, than I am. He's better at it than some of our healthcare workers are. The kids don't really have, have problems with this. So we really encourage them to keep a mask on as long as they can, except for eating or, you know, or putting, or putting water in their mouth and really limiting that to, to as small time as possible. So the, the key thing is to have a plan in place and, and be pretty strict. Again, that's going to be different depending on how big your school are and where the cafeteria is and how many people bring lunch and how many people have to go buy lunch. And, and that's why, you know, if we do end up working together more formally, we can kind of go through some of your, your specific plans. But, um, so I can't really give you more specifics than that, but you, you need to have a protocol in place that, that, that minimizes mingling time around meals. That, that's best, probably the best answer.
And one thing that I can add, and Suzanne, you may want to jump in here. We do have desk shields for not only our classrooms, but also for our cafeterias to add some more Swiss cheese. I think I'm saying it right, around, around lunch, you know, the eating of food within the schools. And so that, and you and I had talked a little bit about that as well. I mean, just if you could just share your thoughts around what, what adding that additional barrier does, not only with, you know, lunch, but also for classrooms too, because we have those in our classrooms as well.
Sure. And, and you know, Elizabeth, we've been talking for months now and you've asked a lot of great questions and I know your team here has, and we appreciate those. They're thoughtful and anytime you can add a layer of protection, you know, a disinfectant process, a hand hygiene process, some hand sanitizer, certainly the desk shields, that's an extra layer. We know that not every classroom can maintain the six-foot distance in every school. We hope that they can. We want them to. But we want to keep a minimum of three feet. So as Dr. Smith was saying, we like all those layers, one in front of the other, right? As many as we can. So if you know for certain that kids are going to be removing masks, either for a mask break, for an activity that they're doing, like playing an instrument, or for consuming food, that distance becomes especially important. So we've seen schools just sort of break out really cool other, other plans that we didn't anticipate. I'll, I'll give you an example. I was at St. Albert over there in North Royalton doing an inspection, training a colleague. And they just don't have enough room in their, in their cafeteria style. They have like little brown tables and usually six or eight kids could sit at those tables, depending on their age. Now they have socially distanced them to have at least three foot of space in between each child when they're eating. And so what they did is like yourselves, they put some partitions up in between the kids as well to try to create those barriers. So I think being creative, spreading kids out to different areas, staggering lunchtimes when weather permits, eating outdoors, there's a lot of options for eating in classrooms. You guys have been super creative with all the things you, the learning modules and the way you've had to do things. You're able to pivot pretty well. I'm pretty confident that you can reopen safely.
I'll bring it up now to other board members.
I have a couple of questions. So Dr. Smith, one of the things that you had talked about was there had been no transmission from children to adults. And you had said that some of the things had been mask slip-ups. So I know I hear a lot of comments or concerns about, you know, people not wearing masks correctly. Is it that they weren't marrying, wearing masks, they weren't wearing masks correctly? Or their mask slipped, you know, momentarily? Or can you give us a little more information when you talk about, you know, the, the non-adherence to masks, mask policy on that?
Yeah, so it, it's a little, it's, it's a little bit of all those things. And again, kind of when you put this all together, I think the, the key point I was trying to get is in, in, in every one of the cases that we saw, it was something with the mask. Like it was pretty clear. So I, I, again, I mentioned it, it varied across the age groups. What, probably the biggest cluster, which I think was five or six of the 32, was early on in the pandemic here in North Carolina. Pre-K settings did not require masks. So we had some, some, some younger children who were together and one of them had COVID and can kind of, and kind of spread it to their, to their colleagues. So it's, it's their colleagues, their, their pre-K, their friends, whatever, their, their classmates. The, the other ones were, were, there were a couple of instances of people just kind of flaunting the rules and kind of some of the older kids. We didn't, one, one question that, that we get, and again, there's, you know, 50-plus districts that we work with, so everybody kind of has their own, own stories. One thing I, I would say, just to put this out there, there was not any like major episodes of protesting or we're going to refuse to wear masks or kind of anything like that. It really was these kind of one-off instances of either people forgetting. Again, that, that's more in the younger group. A couple of kids, you know, older children just kind of momentarily not taking their mask off, but nothing really that, that was, was not, not able to be overcome. And, and in fact, we have something, and I can send this to you via email to, to circulate. We have this, these things called the 12 principles that we've learned kind of collectively. And, and the couple of things in there that are important is kind of being transparent. And also not, not blaming anybody if there's a, if there's COVID transmission, kind of, you know, what happened? How do we learn from this and how do we move forward? So again, the, the best example is the one in the pre-K students where, where masks were not required initially. And they said, hmm, we didn't require masks because yes, it is true that disease is, you know, is less commonly transmitted in that age group, but since it happened, we should go ahead and do that. But, but again, the common denominator, denominator is for multiple reasons people didn't wear, people weren't masked. There wasn't really anything more specific than that I can tell you.
Okay. And then I also had a question around, obviously you've done, you know, there's been studies and, and I'm not sure if this is just for you or for our other guests. But a lot of studies around schools, what do you sing on indoor sports programs? And music programs particularly, you know, there's band orchestra, there's choir. They all have a little bit different, you know, whether you're blowing into the instrument, whether you're singing and projecting and, you know, string orchestra, string instruments, you know, generally you're, you're playing, but you're not, it's, you know, I'm sure if you have a mask on, it's probably a little safer. I just want a little more information around those activities.
Yeah, so I think in, in general, a couple, a couple of thoughts about that. And first of all, I'm a trombonist, so it breaks my heart to say you shouldn't play your trombone inside without a mask on. But I, I think our, as a group, we feel that, that, that masking is really critical. And there may be some examples where you can, where you can do this. And, and again, be happy to kind of work individually on specific situations and protocols and whatnot. But I think in general, it's safest to wear a mask. Most, you know, even for like high-impact sports where you're, you're, you're running and, and, and potentially breathing hard, there's not been great data, you know, even in, even in people who, who have pulmonary conditions like asthma, that, that you can't wear a mask. So we encourage even our football players and basketball players to, to wear masks. I think, again, in terms of level of safety, I'm much more comfortable outdoors than indoors. And, and you know, for both athletics as well as, as kind of, you know, performing arts. For instance, you know, marching band outside, I, I really have very few problems with that. And again, if we're talking about, if the, the district is interested in doing something like having indoor, like indoor band practice, that's something that I think you need a clear protocol. You know, either working with the Department of Health or our group or someone else to kind of make sure you're doing everything. It could potentially go well, but there's, you know, there's just, the, the risk is much higher. But things like, you know, if you're indoors, spacing is important. They have these little masks that you can put on the, the, the end of the, the instrument. I'm sure you guys have seen that, like on TV in the college football games. So you can do that. We feel that, you know, if you're blowing into an instrument, you can put a, rather than not being a mask on, you could, you can like put a little slit where the mouthpiece is going to go. So you're just blowing into it and then, and then additional putting a, a, a mask on the bell of the horn. So there are all these little things that you can do to reduce risk of transmission. So I think there's ways that you can plan if you have a, you know, a solid plan and, and protocol. But again, in general, masking I, I think is critical to the extent you can do it. And outside is, is just safer than, than, than inside. And again, that's, that's probably all I can say without getting into like a specific plan for a specific group.
Thank you.
First of all, welcome and thank you all for joining us. I have two questions. First, I have a question for, for Dr. Smith that I'm going to ask. And then I'm going to move on and give you a minute to reflect on before you answer. And then I have another question about a new strain that hopefully one of the epidemiologists or, or somebody else might answer. So Dr., as I'm sure you're aware, in these ages, there is social media everywhere. And it is, I, I have since we started talking tonight, I've been getting messages about an NC Policy Watch article from January 19th that challenges the ABC Science Collaborative. I'm sure you're probably aware of the article. So my hope is, is that just take a minute and, and please use this as an opportunity to address the, the folks who have come upon that in our community and respond to it. For us, if you would. And while you're thinking about your response to that question, my other question to the panel is that today in the news, there was a story around a new strain of COVID that according to a news report, wearing masks does not help with. This was on, I think on Channel 5 this evening. Is, is anyone familiar with this? Is this something that, that, you know, is this changing the game? You know, I, I would really appreciate any, any input that we have responding to that concern as well. I've done it.
I'll answer the second question first, actually. So no, and, and, and I think this is important. So yes, Liz was kind enough to send me that clip in anticipation of this meeting. So first thing I would say is the physician interviewed and never actually said that. If you look at the clip, it was the reporter who, who said that. So I think it's possible that the physician was misquoted. That, that's, that's honestly what I think about, about masks not working. Because that really goes against everything we say. And in fact, our group's take has been the, the, the more, and I probably shouldn't say, I shouldn't even bring this up, but the, the more concerning issue is kind of as this virus mutates down the road, will the vaccine, you know, are we need to be vaccinated kind of year after year as things change? So that, that's really more of the issue. There's nothing to suggest that this new variant like can get through masks or it's any smaller or anything like that. So I, I would say that there's no data suggests that in the context of all these mitigation strategies that we're talking about, that you can't open schools safely. And if you're social distancing and you're wearing a mask, that you're more likely to transmit. Now, if you're not wearing a mask and, and you're in a big group, group of people, there are data suggests that it's more transmissible. So I don't know if anyone wants to comment on that. And if we have time, as you can imagine, yes, that, that article that, that you cited, sir, was something that all of the 50-plus superintendents in our districts brought up. So I have a couple of slides kind of walking through that point by point. But I certainly don't want to, I don't want to hog the rest of the meeting. So let's, let's see what other questions people have. And then I'm, I'm happy to come back and I do have some, 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 obviously some thoughts about that article you mentioned.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
One thing that I would ask, kind of just to kind of build a bridge a little bit. You know, we have Dr. Smith and Dr. Meyer here. You all know Dr. Meyer is our partner for Metro Health as well, also Professor at Case. And we also have Suzanne from the Board of Health, who has been working across our county with multiple schools on reopening. So those who may have a, a concern that, you know, Dr. Smith and his group have a particular agenda. Well, you know, the Board of Health is certainly, you know, I think unquestionably independent body who is just providing information to a district. Says their decisions. And so kind of connected to that question. One thing that I've got a lot of questions about is, you know, our county is in red. Yet the Board of Health guidance now gives schools the ability to start planning towards, you know, hybrid or five day in person. So if you could just, again, kind of help the public understand that thinking, because that is a question that I did receive through multiple channels from staff as well.
Sure. So Elizabeth, thank you. Here's the thing, everybody's going back to school. March 1st is the date, the governor has made that abundantly clear that that's when his plan for us to reopen. And so now it's just coming down to, as Dr. Smith described it, what are the best strategies? What things can we do to mitigate our risk? Will we eliminate all of our risk? Is there some magic bullet? No, we have a high incidence of transmission still in our county. We're not trying to sugarcoat it. We have all the numbers for all the cases. We have the deaths, we have the probables, we have the, you know, positive confirmed cases. But the point is, we know that there are emotional, we know that there are physical and other needs that the students have. And, and you folks as well, you've been asked to do, you know, a tremendous lift this whole time with trying to educate. And many of you have expressed concerns about kids getting back to school. We know that's best. We, we're right with you. We know about, we've heard about suicide rates. We've heard about all sorts of indices that, you know, child abuse, food and food deserts and all sorts of reasons why kids need to be in school. We know the valuable work that you do. So what we're asking is that you do it responsibly and you guys have done that all the way along. You've asked great questions about everything from death barriers to sanitizing. We are very confident that you can do it and the other school districts can do it, but we have to stay transparent. We need, you know, reporting and, and we've always asked you that, Elizabeth. When we ask for those school line lists, when you guys get a positive, you guys are very straightforward with us. There is no shell game. It's, hey, this is where we're at. What do we do? And we've talked through all those things and I think you can handle it. I do. I think the schools can. I think there's always some tentativeness with some, some folks about going back, whether it's the parents or the teachers. And we will answer those questions. And another thing, our only agenda is to prevent biological, chemical and physical contamination. That's been our agenda from the Board of Health since my start 28 years ago, right? We want to prevent illness and injury like physicians here do. That's why we're all here. All right? But it, it demands continued vigilance. We can't start slacking off. We can't be lax on these strategies. We have to take them seriously. And that's going to call for creativity and, you know, somebody being really focused on it at the school district level and reporting to us and us working with you. Our sanitarians are going out to do inspections of all the schools in the county. There's 234 that are licensed that we inspect. And, you know, we're committed to it. We're learning as we go. Everybody's got to be patient and a little bit nimble. I'm not kidding you, the very first week, March 9th, that Monday, I was in the COVID call center, which I want to remind you is open for you to call Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. It's the 216-201-2000. Our secretaries do a great job with triaging. When you call them, they say, are you calling about COVID? Do you say yes? You go right into the queue. We have eight full-time public health people all day long to answer your questions, right? Unbiased. You can be anonymous if you want. You can make a complaint if you want. We're committed to answering. We don't always have the question. But that very first day, I was in the call center. We're telling people at that time with the science that we had, that the best process would be the best plan to stay in school. Because how would parents suddenly pivot and be able to be home with their kids? How would they find daycare? How would they find transportation, et cetera, et cetera? Midway through the conversation that first week, while I'm talking to a gentleman on the phone about why kids need to stay in school, the governor gets on, actually it was the Tuesday, I take it back to 10. He gets on the phone and says, we're closing the schools, shut it down. We're like, what the, like right in the middle of the conversation, we had no prior knowledge and that keeps happening. I got to be honest with you because as data and science comes in, and quite frankly, and I, I think in some ways political pressure, decisions are made that are sometimes outside the evidence-based science that Dr. Smith alluded to. We're trying to go by the science. If in a perfect world, we would have enough vaccine for everybody right now. We don't yet. We need you all to be patient, but if we're vigilant and we do those strategies, we've had a lot of schools that have had no cases. And it's not a coincidence that those schools are urging parents to have kids stay home. Not in school and concentrate on school first as the first priority and not going to parties and not having sleepovers. And that's where the huge events that end up having lots of transmission. And we have other parents that completely blow that off, or kids that blow that off, and they're in huge groups. And then the next thing you know, we have a cluster of 70 cases or 53 cases. So if we're vigilant, and, and I can tell you, we pretty much, all of us at the Board of Health, we go to work and come home, go to work and come home. We've been living in quarantine ourselves this whole time because, you know, until we can get vaccinated and get both of our doses in us, we know there's a huge incidence of huge chance for us, right? So we're going to need that vigilance we've talked about and those strategies we've talked about.
So even with, you know, we have new variants, I, I never use the science right variants or strains. Your guidance remains the same for schools?
Absolutely. And, and, and the thing, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was going to say, so I, I don't want to play doctor here because I'm looking at Dr. Meyer and I'm thinking she or Dr. Smith could probably explain this a lot better than I can. But the thing that we worry about, I will say in my limited knowledge, is the variants give us more opportunity for spread. That is the thing that we really worry about, right? So until everybody has, has vax, has been vaccinated, the variants can be very, can be problematic. So again, this is why we need to remind you all to adhere to the strategies that have gotten us to this point, right? Those five non pharmaceutical interventions. But I would certainly defer to Dr. Meyer or Dr. Smith to talk more about the variants.
Yeah, I agree. And just the, the only thing to say there is, right, the, it's great. So you guys have five and in North Carolina, we just focus on the three, but I, I got the five that you, that you mentioned. Yeah, that's exactly right. And, and we're talking about spread though, again, it's spread. Those, these numbers that it's more transmissible are based on groups of people not masking, not social distancing, not doing these things. If you wear a mask and you social distance and do the, depending what state you're in, one or three other things. It, you know, you're still able to, to decrease transmission, which I think is important as, you know, for public health. But also you're able to open schools, open schools safely. Yeah. If you want to talk about spike proteins real quickly, so I'm a pediatrician, which means I work with kids. I try to explain things in, in easy ways to understand. And I'm a, I'm a Star Wars fan. So this is how I describe it. If you think of a Death Star in Star Wars, right, it looks like a perfect sphere. When you zoom in and, you know, look sky workers flying, like, and you see all those towers, right? So at, at, at the surface of any virus and the, the coronaviruses are, are called coronaviruses that look like little crowns. They have these little proteins that stick up that are the spike proteins. And, and that's basically how the coronavirus latches on to your cells. And that's the main target for all the vaccines that, that we know about. When you look at the studies so far, if, and people who have either had natural disease or been vaccinated, you actually have antibodies or your immune system can, can recognize basically different levels of that, of that tower. And so we're talking about as, as those change, it is theoretically possible that people who are vaccinated and people have disease, it changes enough that your immune system is not going to recognize it. And that's a longer term question. So far, what we're seeing, at least, at least with the Pfizer vaccine, I think Moderna, Moderna is working on this, that so far there's still a pretty good response. You need to be vaccinated. The question is over time, is that going to change? And, and are we going to get to something like, like influenza where you need a vaccine every year? But so far, there's, there's no data, again, that this virus, these new strains are going to permeate masks better. There's actually not data that it causes more severe disease. It's just that it's more, more people could potentially get sick if you're not doing these. Yeah, I like that term, the non pharmaceutical interventions.
So I have a question for Kevin and Suzanne, and thank you everybody for being here with us. What are you seeing locally? I mean, I know we've had a lot of private schools who have been in session the whole time and haven't been remote, as well as ones that have been hybrid and we've had ones that have been remote. So can you give us a little bit of color of what you're seeing locally?
Yes, ma'am. Just to give you the straight numbers, we have had in Cuyahoga County, excluding the city of Cleveland. For those of you who are not from here, we are a county health department, but the city of Cleveland has its own Department of Public Health. So when we provide you these statistics, these are only county numbers, not inclusive of the city. We have had 133 schools report cases to us. It's been a total of 2,831 cases. And the divide in that is 1,664 student cases, 1,167 staff cases. And that is from the period of September 2020 through last week. And those are numbers that are reported to us by individual schools per the template that we have set up for them to report. One thing we will tell you is just by nature of having hundreds of schools in our district, not everyone reports on time every week to get us the information. So our data, much like the state coronavirus data, right? It, it can lag because there can be delays in reporting due to capacity issues, but those are the most current numbers that we have. So, and I think Suzanne would agree with me to say that we would go on record as saying that we have seen far more transmission outside of the classroom area. Extracurriculars seem to be a real hot button for us. And, and I, and I want to be clear too, that when we talk about exposure among school age children and even school staff, oftentimes we're not talking about a single incident of exposure, right? Because we have kids that they might drive to school together, they got a couple of classes together, they eat lunch together, they go out after school together, then they decide they're going somewhere. You know, it's much like a football team, right? If you keep banging into each other for several minutes at a time, over and over and over, and you're sweating and exhaling and really working hard, there could be a chance that you're going to be like more likely to transmit. So we just want to, you know, understand that, as Suzanne has mentioned, you've done a fantastic job in the classroom setting. But extracurriculars and things that occur outside of the school environment are really the things that concern us still at this point.
And I just want to add on to that. And, and that's, I think that, that really brings home the whole point here, which is if children are in school where you can, you can monitor masking, you can monitor social distancing, you can monitor hand washing as opposed to, you know, remote school and the kids go back in the backyard and play with their neighbors, maybe without masks on. I, I, I'm coming around to this notion that school, school may actually be a safer choice for all these kids than not being in school.
And to your point, Dr. Smith, we've heard a lot of reporting out with two parent working households where kids have had to go to these centers for learning because there's nobody to watch them, you know? Maybe mom and dad have located, you know, into places, they're away from the rest of their family, they don't have a nanny. This is the kids are going to rec centers or different groups. And a lot of the families there will contact us and say, you know what? At least if school was back in session, it would be the normal teachers with the normal discipline and the kids would be listening. I feel bad for these moderators because they're trying to keep handled, but they're basically glorified babysitters and they're having a real tough time. And somebody mentioned earlier, the private schools versus the public schools. I'll just let you know that we are still seeing cases and we're still seeing cases higher than we want them to be. And because like Kevin said, we can't be sure, to be really honest, if community spread is happening in classroom, classroom spread is happening in community, vice versa. We just know that the things that you instill in our students in the class do carry over to the families. We've had so many parents report, you know, my kid's after school program, my kid's bus driver, my kid's teacher really did a great job and they've gotten our family in line. The messaging that you guys send really affects public health. We need your help in doing it. We're happy to help you in reverse, but we feel like schools have done a great job overall and you can, you can do it. Yeah, I know you can do it. We've got to get kids back to school. It's time. And so we've got to do it safely.
I just have one more question that I'm going to, or Jody, did you have one, one more?
Yeah, actually, this is a question for you, Liz. How many cases of transmission have we had in our Right at School program that's happening at Wiley?
We have had no cases.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I would like to sort of circle back a little bit to something that was just mentioned in passing around athletics. So I think that we've done a, a very successful job mitigating spread on our sports teams. I know that our coaches and our athletic department overall has been very, very diligent about this. It hasn't been perfect, but I, I would like to know, so our plan currently, as, as, you know, and it's evolving certainly, version 47 is that the, in, in the elementary schools, the extracurriculars are probably going to happen remote, you know, at home as they have been. I don't know what the plan is for those at the middle and high school levels. And, you know, I'm thinking about things like gym that are often very large classes that involve, you know, movement and, and athletic activities. So I'd like you to speak about that in particular, just as we spoke about music and that sort of thing a little while ago. And then also about, you know, the notion of, you know, sometimes kids change in the locker room. So anything, any insights that you could give around those topics, I would appreciate.
So Dan, in the beginning of the pandemic response, we were called upon at the Board of Health to review graduation plans and summer sports plans. And I probably, no exaggeration, looked at 250 of those because many schools, they have, you know, 27 sports. And I learned more about lacrosse, rugby, curling, some of these sports. I, I was like, what are you, I don't even know what this sport, are you making this up? Seriously, I never even heard of some of the sports they sent me. But regardless, we saw some common themes in much the same way that we look at the mitigation strategies Dr. Smith speaks of and that Swiss cheese. And let me just give you a couple. For example, not sharing water bottles, not drinking from a community trough, a water sprayer that's like a trough style. Not sharing mouthpieces. I was surprised to see kids in the same family to hand a mouthpiece from one kid to the other and like share a mouthpiece because one of them lost it. Just handling dirty clothes of one another. I know, I know having a brother in sports, growing up with him, that some crazy smells came from that bag that he carried. My poor mother, she was a trooper. But my point being, there are lots of plans and the OHSAA has put together some guidance documents that are pretty well thought out and they've been vetted with physicians. And I think, again, we can return to sports safely. I'm much less concerned about sports from a personal standpoint than I am about academics. I think academics should be our priority, but I know that for some kids, for some learners, even in my own family, sports are the thing that motivate them. They'll go to school and be engaged because they know if they don't get good grades, mom or dad says no sports, no extracurriculars. And if that's the motivator for those kids, fantastic, I want them to get the education. That's our first priority. But you know, the new quarantine guidelines that we spoke of briefly, do not extend the extracurriculars and after school and sports. So if you do want to quarantine for the shorter time, be it the seven days or the 10 days, kids are not allowed to be included in those events after because we know the risk of transmission when they're not wearing masks during physical activity or when they're not in that controlled classroom or bus setting is not the same. So if you decide to go to the shorter than 14 day model, that doesn't apply to after school. And it also doesn't apply in areas where you don't have the six foot distancing. So if kids are in a classroom or in a lunchroom and they're eating and their masks are removed and they're just that three foot or, or you know, less than six foot distance, they cannot go down to those lower methods. They have to stick with the 14 days because we know the likelihood of transmission is much greater.
I just have one last question. We have been in conversation, Suzanne, with different people at the Board of Health around air quality. I know this is a big question that, you know, we see a lot with schools. I mean, we have made updates to our system. We also are purchasing air purifiers in, in those classrooms. We can't do the MRF 13 filtration. Is that, what, what's your guidance around that in terms of how districts should proceed? Is there anything that would preclude us not being able to start based on, you know, air quality issues or concerns?
No, I can tell you that there isn't because our district sanitarians have been inspecting your school twice per school year for as many years as I've been alive. So I know that in general, air quality in our schools in greater Cleveland are very good. We do have some asbestos and lead paint issues that have nothing to do with COVID that we're addressing with those individual schools and some rooms and some areas aren't used because of those issues. But from an, from a perspective of indoor air quality, I got to say, again, 28 years I've been doing this. I've learned more about air quality in the last 10, 15 months than I've learned the rest of the years combined. Because it is such a person-to-person transmission that air becomes very important. The basic guidance, and I am in no way an indoor air quality specialist, maybe Dr. Meyer, Dr. Smith would want to jump in after. But I know these three things, all my IEQ people have really pushed these three things to me. One, if you can operate your system at peak performance. One, if you can operate your system at peak performance, meaning you work with HVAC professional and he or she is aware of how that machine is supposed to operate. That's number one. Maintaining it, changing out filters, doing what they need to do flushing lines, especially when you return to school, flushing out water lines. We have all sorts of guidance on our, on our Water Health website for air conditioning units, heating units, making sure you're doing the things, you know, the water fountains are disconnected, so we aren't using community water fountains. There's a lot of things like that. Number two, like you said, the parameters, as much fresh air that can be introduced, up to thirty percent is recommended of fresh air. And that might mean the classroom's a little cooler because you have to crack a few windows even in the winter to get some fresh air going. That might mean you have to reverse ceiling fans to push air downward. There's lots of safe practices out there on our website about indoor air quality. And the third is hitting those parameters, six air exchanges per hour is what's recommended. You can't necessarily do that in the older buildings. You can't necessarily put a Merv-rated, thirteen-rated filter into your system depending on the age or type of system that you have. But those are the things, if you can get as much fresh air, if you can operate the system properly and you can try to do those air exchanges to move the flow of air around, you're good to go. And we just want to caution you against if you are using fans that you don't ever want fan to blow from one person to the other. So the droplets can become pushed over toward the other person more easily. Of course, with mask wearing, hopefully that would be cut down anyway, but just just an extra.
So we're working right now with our, on the air exchanges per hour. We do have a firm that's going to be measuring that for us and and measuring that ourselves as well. We will have the Merv thirteen and the heap of filters. So is there a concern that we don't have those measurements of air concern, air exchange per hour done, you know, today that we should not proceed or, you know, what would be your advice there?
I think you do the best you can with what you've got. I can tell you that we are not hitting the six air exchanges per hour at the Board of Health building that's relatively new ourselves. So we understand that. There are times when we do things like we crack some windows in different areas, we use fans in different areas, our blower is on constantly. But we worked with a HVAC professional who's done this for thirty-plus years and he gave us some great guidance. So that's what we recommend you do as well. Dr. Meyer, I just don't want to exclude you if you had anything to add.
No, that's, I mean, I think that's it, right? All, well, just like what Mike was saying, all of these things add up, right? So, you know, if you're spacing, then, you know, the indoor air quality is so important. But if you're all tight together, there's a lot of people in that room, then your indoor air quality all of a sudden becomes very important, right? But if you're doing all of these things together, then you're really cutting down significantly on the transmission. And I think that just is another wonderful way of highlighting that it's complicated. So looking at all the details, assessing each one of these risk factors and coming up with a really detailed plan, which Liz, I really just am so appreciative of all of the work that's gone into the planning. Because I do think when you have, it may be a very complex plan and it may have to change. As we've seen with COVID, this is really going to give us, you know, a run for the money and the, and and it's not over yet, right? We we got these new variants coming down and science really cannot happen fast enough right now. But if you have a very clear, detailed plan that is, you know, really hitting each one of these significant things that we know impact transmission, I think that's where you're going to have really robust planning in place. And you're really going to see very, very limited in-school transmission, just like everyone's been saying, right? We're going to have COVID, we're going to have COVID moving forward, we're going to have it in our communities, we're going to have cases. Cases are going to come into our school space. And the real role here is ensuring that we do not see in-school transmission. So there's not a single instance where we're going to have somebody transmit from one person to another in the school space. And I think you can do that when you have all key aspects addressed.
Thank you so much. I want to thank our guests. I don't know if you have some, any close thoughts, Dr. Smith, I see your mic is off. And you'll be having to go soon.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, it's your meeting. Do you want me to go back to that social media post real quickly and just kind of? I can, I'm happy to do that.
That would be helpful because I I do want our community to know, you know, we have members of the Board of Health here, doctors in the field here, so that we really have access to the newest research and we're using that as we understand the best plans to lay out. And I'm absolutely, you know, glad that we have, you know, bodies, you know, a body for, who has a local context and is doing this guidance, but also, you know, researchers who have the, the national context and looking at the research too, but please go ahead.
Yeah, perfect, because it actually will bring everything home nicely, I think. So, oh, I should share my screen again, sorry. Okay, so, yeah, so, right, there's a lot of information on social media and and when this article came out, you know, we got some, some backlash. And again, I already kind of went through this already. These are the findings, seven seventy-three community-acquired infections, thirty-two secondary transmission within school, no child to adult. And and like everything in academia, there are limitations and nuances to the data interpretation. And I think we as academics get that, we understand that, that most parents are not academics. And and this, there was this, this, I guess it was an article that that was published that said, you know, you should not use data from this study to decide whether to open schools or not. And I totally agree with you. You should not use data from a single study to decide whether to open schools or not. And that's why, in, you know, in the couple of weeks after this, the first thing I said is I'm not here to tell you all what to do. It sounds like you're in a different place than some of our schools in North Carolina because the governor has said you are going to open schools. So if schools are going to open, we can help you figure out how to do it safely. But again, just because I was asked this question, I'm going to kind of hit the, hit the high points and and I think we'll, we'll summarize, you know, what we've been talking about the last hour very nicely. So, so the first critique, and and this was actually was in the middle of the post, they actually took a screenshot from the New York Times and put a little box around when our study was done. So the first critique was that our data are not applicable to current times because of community transmission being very low. And that's true at the state level, community transmission was lower than than it is now. However, as already mentioned, although at the state level, that's true, at least to the districts that we use, the eleven districts in the study had rates, you know, almost to a thousand per hundred thousand folks, and that's a pretty high level. And and those are not districts that had any higher rates of secondary transmission than the other ones. So that's, that's one thing. The other thing to point out is that in in North Carolina, and and really at the nation, at the national level, when schools have been closed for Christmas break, that's when this highest peak has happened. So it's clear that schools are not the primary place where this disease is being spread. And that's the first thing. Second thing, I think we already talked about this, that our study is not applicable to current times because the new variant that is thirty to seventy percent more transmissible, that's their quote, not mine. We already talked about this, but the good news is it's really not relevant when it comes to opening up schools because we know that masks, hand washing and social distancing still work. Another big critique was that the study ignores asymptomatic spread. And that's true only in the sense that we did not test everybody. I know testing has happened, you're, I already heard that that's happening in some places in Ohio. That's happening in some places in North Carolina. In North Carolina, the DHHS decided not to require testing to go back to school, really because we thought it would kind of worsening the, the, the social inequities that we already know that are there, that the districts that could afford staffing and could afford the tests would be back in school sooner than the districts that couldn't. So, so testing everybody, at least right now in the state of North Carolina at least, is not possible. However, th- this critique misses the key point, which is we're not ignoring asymptomatic spread. The whole point of ensuring that everyone's masking is we assume that everyone's infected. We know that you can't tell by looking at someone whether they have COVID or not. So you assume they have COVID, that's why you wear your mask all the time, that's why you social distance, and that's why you wash your hands. So there's, I could talk longer, but those are the key points. And and when we put this together, you know, as I said already, we're not telling you or any of our districts if or when schools can open. Our goal is to, is to provide, to provide data on the experience of school districts who have worked really, really hard. And and again, it really sounds like you all have as well to have plans to keep students, teachers and other staff safe, whether it's virtual hybrid or a full in-person education. The second thing is, you know, you've, I've not said tonight, nor have I ever said that spread is not possible. The thing is to be transparent about it. If you do have spread, why did it happen and how can you fix it moving forward? All right, I don't think you're going to get to zero, but remember, you're not going to get to zero if schools stay closed. As I already said that. Clearly, if you look at the last couple of months, schools have been closed and rates have gone up. Schools are not magical in and of themselves, schools reflect communities. And and really, again, to close, again, I did not, I did not edit this since you asked me the question, sir. So clearly, success depends on the quality and fidelity of mitigation strategies. We'd be happy to help work, work through this with you, but it sounds like you're doing a great job thinking about all these things, regardless of whether or not I'm on this call or not. So I just wanted to share those kind of general talking points.
Thank you so much for that, doctor. I really do appreciate it. And I, I, I kind of had a hunch that you would, you know, appreciate the opportunity to sort of respond in real time. And I'm glad that I was right. I was, I took a little bit of a risk on that one, but I'm glad that you, that you did it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
I just want to check in and make sure that Molly and Beverly, do you have any questions? Because I know we've kind of been dominating the conversation and I want to give the, our two other board members a chance to ask some questions.
No, I have been scribbling furiously here in my notebook. And I think when we have our discussion after the guests have left, I'll probably have some opinions. But right now, I'm just taking notes furiously. Thank you.
And just, you know, the other thing, ninety percent of what I just said is on our website, abcsciencecollaborative.org, if you have questions about something I said tonight.
And I just want to, am I, can you hear me? I just want to say, Mike is very humble. But for me personally, it's been incredible to be able to have this broader look at the data, you know, I, I mean, that is just invaluable to be able to see what's happening in other spaces. You know, each community is different, so every community response is going to be different. But it's just being able to understand what's happening in other areas at that level has been tremendously valuable.
Thank you very much for your time. I know, Liz, you have more things to go on the presentation, but as far as the, as far as answering additional questions, is there a way? I mean, I guess, Liz, can we just ask questions through you to to get through?
Absolutely, yeah, we will continue to take questions from both Dr. Smith, Dr. Meyer and the Board of Health. And the, and I know, we'll also share out that number that Suzanne Rush shared for anyone in the community who asks questions, who can call and ask follow-up questions as well.
Elizabeth, if it's okay, we do have another call, we have to jump off to grab, but we just wanted to let you guys know. We don't say this very often, but we're saying to you guys. You've done a tremendous amount of work and we're so proud to partner with you and collaborate with you to get schools reopened safely. Our tagline on the ccbh.net website is your trusted source for public health information. And that's what we want to be for you. We'll try to be impartial and do what's best for the good of the community. We don't have all the answers. We have to be humble about it. It's still a work in progress because, as these researchers have told you, as we find out new information, we have to be nimble. I want to thank Dr. Smith and Dr. Meyer for being so generous and spending their time. We know this has been a crazy time for you as it has been for us. And vaccine is made available. We want you to trust us to come through. Our employees are signing up to get vaccinated themselves. We trust the process, we trust the products, both Moderna and Pfizer, so we want to encourage you to do the same. And last little push, we just want to say to you is that we know about equity issues that affect your students and your families in your school district. We know the fact that persons of color, both brown and black, are just apparently affected by COVID, more hospitalizations, more need for intensive care and more deaths. And we want to change that and we need your help to do that. So the positive speaking that you do as a school board and as teachers and educators and as leaders in our community will help move the needle on public health. So if we can be of help to you, please give us a call. Elizabeth has been so wonderful in contacting us. Don't hesitate to do so in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Smith, thank you, Dr. Meyer. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you all.
Thanks. Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so that very long section, but I just wanted everyone to really have an understanding of the approach we take in terms of our recommendations that we're making to the board. And I have worked, you know, hand in hand with Suzanne every time, you know, we talk through, should this be the structure? Should that be the structure? Is this something that we should consider? She's giving us feedback, she's sending us to the research. She has reviewed our plans and we brought our students in for our sports, our students in, the MBAU students, when we brought staff back into our buildings. So a lot of the things we've already implemented, we have already received the feedback. And we know that it's aligned to the Board of Health because they have looked at our, our plan. And we will continue to do that, you know, as we move forward. But that has been something I've been very, very committed, committed to, will continue to do. So we'll move back into our presentation then. So, Kasey, if you want to take that back over.
Give me one second. It's not loading for some reason. Can you see it now?
It's coming up yet.
Okay.
All right. So the reopening plan that we're going to present tonight, we did align to CDC recommendations, the Ohio Public Health Advisory System and the Calhoguery County Board of Health recommendations. We've, we've shown the health and safety documents and health, health and safety information multiple times. It's also been in the communication that's been sent out. But I want to just quickly go through the alignment to CDC guidelines document because it just, you know, again, will remind us of the things that are recommended and the steps that we've taken as a district. I won't go too much into it because we have done it in previous meetings, but I just, again, wanted to lay that out for this particular meeting. And so here, you'll see that as relates to mask use, we do have a, that's one of the mitigation strategies from the CDC, we do have a mask policy. We will have extra masks available for staff and students. We do want students to bring their own, but we will have additional ones as well. We will make sure that we teach and reinforce the mask expectations using where necessary, the Student Code of Conduct to guide instances where mask expectations are not being followed. We know this is a very big concern for staff and we will have a process in place to address that, both in orienting students and also any needed follow-up. In terms of social distancing, our, our standard is six feet, even though three feet is the minimum. Our standard is six feet and we have our schools set up that way. We have our schools set up to guide where students will be walking in our buildings. We have partitions on the desks for the teachers and the students. And for the, the students on the bus, they will be seating one, one to two students per seat, again with masks and sanitizing products as well. Third recommendation is social distancing. And so again, you'll see decals across our buildings that will be reminders of students with the six-feet distances as they navigate the buildings. As relates to cleaning and disinfecting practices, I'm not going to speak through all of these because we have talked about this before. But we have trained our staff on what's going to be required in COVID nineteen. Also, this is already in place because we have students in the building as well. Increasing frequency, when there's a positive case, we do have a process for additional cleaning. Water fountains are off, we'll be having water available for students if necessary. White buckets in each classroom, we'll, we'll talk about some of these specifics a little later. From the hand hygiene perspective, we have hand sanitizers throughout our classrooms and throughout our buildings in the high-traffic areas. And also, we'll, we have in our process, students are washing and sanitizing their hands during important points like, for example, you know, during, you know, lunch for, lunch, for example, or when they go to the restroom, and we're just to kind of have that frequency happening. As it relates to the ventilation modification, we don't need to hit on that, the link right now because we did talk about this before. The only other piece that I would add is that we will be sharing updates on the air purifiers that we have purchased and some additional updates just on working on some follow-up from the last meeting. I mean, finally, we have signage, signage and messaging all across our buildings, both our school buildings and district buildings as well. Some quick vaccine updates here. And you guys remember, the last time we met, the last information that I received was that I would hear about the vaccine provider partner that would be for our district. I was hoping we would hear about it Monday. I was recently told that all districts will know by tomorrow who their vaccine provider will be. I want to ensure everyone that as soon as I get vaccine information, I will immediately send it out to staff so you know the next steps that you can take. We've been told it's going to take a while to get through this process. We're waiting to hear from the OS, the ODH and the ESC about additional details. Again, we should have our information tomorrow. We will, we, we anticipate vaccines will start during the month of February and I hope they can happen as soon as possible for sure. As, as I know everyone does, is what does who is here watching. So we're going to move to the operations update. I'm just going to take this first slide and I'll turn it over to Paul and George. We, we have made an adjustment to this staff return date, so we are going to recommend that our staff return on Friday, February 5th, as opposed to Monday, February 1st. We do want our staff in earlier than our students returning our recommendations. Some of the feedback that I've heard from different stakeholders in the community is that perhaps staff don't need two full weeks to get acclimated. So I just want people to know, I hear you, I heard you. And so we'll make that, first week, our buildings will be open for staff who would like to return. But we will move that towards that Friday. And again, this second document is the same, how we are aligning our work to the CDC recommendations in terms of our operational action steps. If you want to put really quickly on that, Kathan. I just want to see if there's any additional information. I don't believe it is, but I think it is the same document that we looked at before. We're going to get ready to, get ready to turn this over. That's the same document. Thank you. So we're next going to give some updates on our operational processes. So Dr. Lombardo and George Petkow will take us through this. For the air purifiers and George, you can kind of jump in. We have been doing, I do want people to know, George and I have been doing a lot of work and research on this because we do want to make sure that we are aligned to the recommendations. CDC does not require that schools have air purifiers in place. You know, there are many schools back that don't have that. But we made a decision to purchase those air purifiers for the elementary schools because those are the schools that you, we can't increase the filters to MRF-13. We did increase them, but we, they can't go to MRF-13. Our high schools and the middle schools do have the MRF-13 filters that are, that have been purchased and installed as well. But we did, we really looked carefully at this process. We wanted to make sure that we were getting a good product. George, I don't know if there's anything else you want to share about air purifiers. If you think I covered it, that's fine. We can, you know, we can move forward. Oh.
We actually talk more about it in the next couple of slides.
Okay. Can you give an update on delivery?
Yes, thanks, Ms. Kirby. Good evening, board members. The slide that you're being shown right now are the two models that we purchased out of a company out of California. And we, I was fortunate to be part of the business managers of Northeast Ohio through ESC. And school districts have gone to different manufacturers, but comparing models, this, this unit, these two units are capable of doing what we need them to do. If you look at the MA40 on the right, that is the one that, and it's really small, but I think it's capable of doing up to 800 square feet in a half hour. Those are the ones that we bought for the individual classrooms. So all the elementary schools will have those installed in the classrooms. The MA112 is a much larger unit and I bought a few of those for each school so they could be moved into the spaces where the principal or the custodian feel it's needed, say the media center or cafeteria if they felt they needed it, they couldn't get enough fresh air in there. And this is supporting our ventilation in the schools. So it's, it's an added feature. And they are coming, they're actually on a truck. We're expecting to have them delivered tomorrow or Monday. And once they come in, our staff is prepared to start issuing them, documenting model numbers and then identifying the schools. Those will be in place sometime next week. So another step that we took, we, I did contact Fulton Associates. So Fulton Associates actually did some work for us previously, I think in the high school with BSHM, but it's a company that manages and conducts airflow measurements. So what we, what I have them doing is they gave us a proposal and I asked them to come in and do a sampling of each of our elementary schools. Because of the, the unit ventilators in those rooms, there, we couldn't increase the, of course, the filtration up to a MRF-13 because of the age of those units and the size of the filter rack. So we increased those filters as, as much as we could. I think it was MRF-8s was the average, the size that we could increase it to. And we know that the operation has been checked in all those units, but so to confirm that we are getting this, the max air in there, this company's going to come in. I've going to have them do three classrooms on one floor and three on another floor. And we're going to see where we stand with that. And from that, if we do need to do additional testing because we're not within the amount of air exchanges that were required, which we're trying to get six per hour, then we'll, we'll ask them to come in and do some additional testing. Again, what they're going to do is evaluate the equipment on top of that. So if they see something that's wrong, that our staff hasn't caught, they'll give us that information also. So though it's not requiring a safety guidance, it's just an extra step that, again, we're trying to do to increase our equipment's operation. So Fulton Associates will do a series of airflow and diagnosis tests to document and establish the air exchange and pressure baseline. They will measure and record room sizes, read the supply and return exhaust airflow and calculate the air exchanges per hour. What the, what the standard, what we're trying to achieve is six air changes per hour. So that's what we're, we're hoping that we see. So during the testing process, if they identify any equipment or mechanical deficiencies, they will develop and assist our district, but make recommendations to practice. And I have staff that is accompanying them. So what we're also doing is the staff is being trained. I'm going to buy a couple of these units ourselves. Where our, our staff will be capable of doing these tests, I believe. So upon completion of the field work, again, we'll get that report back. That's fine. We're going to next one. So we did get a HEPI report update. The engineers, I asked them to come back because we, we did not have Wiley done, so I had them come back and do systems checks at the, right at school spaces in Wiley. Their findings were consistent with the other schools. And the engineers concluded that the units were being maintained. They recommended, again, increasing to MRF-13 filters. We have already taken care of that. They've been installed and the outside air has been increased to 30%. So the report has been updated and to include that inspection. So there, it's available. Then I think it's either this or it's on our website. Paul, you going into the physical barriers? Do you want me to continue?
Please continue if you want, George. No problem.
Sure. So the, the physical barriers that we do have, these are samples of them. We, we have ordered them. They are in place in every school and every desk. Of course, every classroom has been socially distanced. We gave every custodian a six-foot stick and we expected them to just distance the, all the students' desks six feet away. Then we asked them to take a tiger paw, put it below the seat. So if a desk is moved somehow throughout the class, it could easily put back in place. We have the desktop barriers are in place. We also gave additional ones for the lunchrooms. So what we wanted to do is provide an additional, recognizing that students do have to take their mask off to eat. We wanted to provide as much safety as we possibly could. So we've included those into the.
I can speak to the building-specific protocols. We do have these on our website. We have general building-specific protocols, which is in the health and safety document. And then for each, each of the buildings, because the buildings do have different configurations, we have the different protocols for students to follow. They, they really kind of walk through the student experience so that parents can understand how safety measures are included in every aspect of their, of their child's school day. You know, our, our documents are living documents, so there may be some updates that, you know, that we make. You know, especially as students start to come back and we, you know, we may learn some things too as well. But again, we use the, the CDC guidance in the development of these. And so as parents make their decisions on how, what type of instructional model they want their child, as we move to hybrid, they have that information.
I'll talk a little bit about the operation FAQs. We have, we have a couple that have been coming in, so we wanted to address. First question is who will clean classrooms and desks between classes? So each classroom has been equipped. We have disinfectant spray. We have a towel roll. We have disinfectant wipes and for students and staff to clean their areas before and after use. In certain situations, we have custodians and cleaners who'll be, be available to support. But our custodians and cleaners will be going around wiping off door handles and, and touch surfaces throughout the day. The second question we've been getting is with the vaccine, there have been several instances where second round of shots are more adverse side effects for some. How will we address larger instances of teachers who may have negative side effects for the second round? And also just the sub-issue in general, if people do have to quarantine. And we will utilize our substitutes and/or we will cover with certified staff that are not currently teaching in the classroom, such as coaches, intervention specialists, and/or provide coverage with classroom teachers according to the collective bargaining agreement. There is definitely a subsortage, not only in our district, but throughout the state. So we do have to utilize all our staff the best that we can. And then a third question that has come in is will staff have options to work remotely on Wednesdays? All staff will be required to report to work on Wednesdays as well. As we have learned more and we've heard about effective mitigation strategies, we've determined that we can effectively clean the buildings with staff presence. So yeah, people will all need to report on Wednesdays as well. We have had this question and you've probably seen it throughout our reopening, but we do want to state it again. What happens when an employee or student begins to display symptoms of COVID-19 during school? If an employee develops those symptoms at work, they will be, they will be sent home, of course. If employees are not able to go home safely, we will make sure that we provide staff or a family member emergency contact or a way of transporting that staff member, or if we need to, we would call 911. If a student develops COVID-19 at school, right away, we will take them to the nurse's office to assess. They will be sent if needed. They have those COVID-related symptoms to our isolation room and then we will call the parent. And we do ask if parents pick kids up within that 30-minute time.
One thing I also want to do, because there were a couple of questions I would contribute about contact tracing. We do have a process that Dr. Lombardo follows when we hear of a COVID case. We've had this with some of the sports where there, you know, was a culture, a student who tested positive and there's a whole process that happens to contact trace. And Paul, if you could just briefly just share what that is so people understand our contract, contact tracing procedures.
Sure. If you've, anyone who's been to our buildings, we do make sure we keep track of people that come in the building. We write down the time, their temperature and what, where they are in the building. And that's very helpful for the contact tracing. So if there is a positive case, the building administrator will gather the information about where they were located. We use our close contact definition within 15 minutes. Around that person for 15 minutes for a period of 24 hours. If they are within close contact, we will take down the name and we'll put them on the sheet that the County Board of Health talked about that gets reported weekly. And I want to say we, I report weekly on time. So all our information is in there. And the things that we're looking for is when did symptoms start? When were they tested and their positive test? We take down that information, which helps us and the County Board of Health figure out where they are in the process of that 14 days. Once we gather the information, it gets sent to the County Board of Health. Kathan does send out a notification and we do clean and sanitize that area. I will tell you, with the cases that we've had, we have been able to, to really locate the area in every school. So it doesn't need to have a full shutdown of the school. We're able to go to that location. And then we have our 360 machine for some of the larger areas where we will make sure that everything is cleaned as quickly as possible.
Thank you. So when I move to our instructional updates.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Thank you. First of all, I want to begin by thanking our teaching staff because for the last two weeks, I've had the opportunity to meet with all grade levels, one through eight, and our high school department liaison. During those conversations, we discussed our instructional framework that I'm going to share here in these slides. But it was also an opportunity for staff to hear their concerns, their thoughts. And we had some very great dialogue. So again, I want to thank our teaching staff for that. We began each one of our meetings with discussing three terms that are constantly being used during our remote and online environment. Those terms are blended learning, hybrid learning and concurrent teaching. We hear them often and sometimes they're often used interchangeably. But just to make sure that we were all on the same page when we discussed anything talking about blended learning, we explained to staff that that is currently what they do already. It is where they have the face-to-face that occurs with online materials and activities. And so the face-to-face is not to be replaced in the blended learning model. In the hybrid learning, the face-to-face is replaced because this is where everything goes to a situation where you are interacting asynchronously and synchronously. And then with concurrent teaching, you bring in your blended and your hybrid learning activities and models and you teach students simultaneously that are at home and in person. So based on the instructional model, here are some of the feedback that came from staff at the elementary, middle and high school level. We heard about the staff being, at the elementary level, they expressed highly that the two-day model that had been proposed prior was not feasible for students in lower grades. They were very concerned about the amount of time that students would be spending without their teacher. They were concerned about the pacing that would happen because of the time they would not have with their teacher. They were also concerned that there would be a larger learning loss that would take place during that time. And they really wanted to make sure that when the survey went out to, to families, that they were able to really talk to the families about what the model meant so that, that families could make a true conscious decision about having their children returned back to school. With the middle school, they wanted to have the opportunity to do both asynchronous and asynchronous as well as concurrent teaching. And when they discuss concurrent teaching, let me say this to all educators. We all want to have the right answer. We all want to do it well. In this remote environment, we will not all have the answers. We are going to fail at some things that we have done. And I think that when we do that, we learn from them. And so we know that teachers are going to have some time where they'll need to really plan and do what they need to do in order to make this work. But we want families to understand that when students go back to school, the classroom truly is going to look different because of the barriers and everything that is there in the classroom. So teachers were concerned about, you know, I want to do this, but I'm going to need time to plan for those things to happen. They were concerned about the technology bandwidth. They were also concerned about materials in the classroom, like do kids share textbooks? How do I do with pencils and pens? How do I do uh with pencils and pens? Uh, as well as they've been concerned about co-teaching, uh gifted intervention. And uh looking at uh time to work and plan for the model. At the high school, very uh much the same thing, opportunities to provide students with asynchronous and synchronous learning. And wanted to do concurrent teaching where it was appropriate and feasible within the lesson. They saw that they could really do this on certain uh areas uh that they had in their lesson plans. Well, we did discuss the changing of the name of the uh groups, and then there was a lot of discussion around music, art, PE. Uh, for students, so I was glad to hear the conversation uh that came out uh today with our uh doctors that were present. For the preschool model, the only thing that I will highlight here is that it has already, this model has already been approved by the board. Uh, students are participating in a half-day model where we have students in the AM and PM. But just pointing out that teachers will have Wednesday as their planning and meeting days, so this will be. An asynchronous day for students. They will be working remotely. And a snack will be provided for each session uh for students in the classroom. And bussing for all of our students with um that have um individualized education plans. So now we are at a new proposed model for grades one through five. The board has already approved pre-K and K to be in an AM and a PM model. We are now recommending to the board the same model for grades one through five. This will have all um students in grades pre-K through five on the same schedule. For students in group A, we are calling them the Heights group. And students in group B, we are calling them the Tigers group. So in the Heights group, we are looking at students, um, we started out with looking at them from last names A through K. And then the Tigers group, we looked at students with last names L through Z. We kind of changed the name of the groups because of the dynamics of what we'll have to do uh to make this model work. For students in the Heights group, it will have to have all students who are, who need transportation. So all of the students who need transportation will have to be in the A group. Students will come to school at eight forty-five to nine, gather breakfast. And then in-person, take that breakfast to the classroom, and then they will have in-person learning that will begin at nine o'clock. When the students leave at eleven thirty, they will have a grab-and-go lunch, and then they will have time to transition home. Teachers will then have lunch during the eleven forty-five and twelve forty-five. Classrooms will be clean during that time. And then at twelve forty-five, students in groups from the Tigers group, will they enter into the building? Um, gather their lunch and then um begin uh the same thing that happened uh with uh students that morning. Students in Heights group will then uh go home, complete their specials, assignments, and participate in any small group. And have their gifted services and their day ends at three thirty. And the same thing happens to the Tiger group on the Tiger day. For Wednesday, all students are eating at home because they are taking their breakfast home from uh the end of the day uh each day. They'll eat their breakfast, but all students will check in at nine o'clock to nine thirty with teachers. So that they can take attendance and provide them with direction of what needs to happen during that day. Students on that day will then complete uh assignments in their core and specials. And participate in assigned small groups and also have their gifted services. So students that remain remote, they will follow a daily schedule just like group A and group B. Students will participate in virtual-only class lessons, uh via the Google Meet or Google Classroom. Families selecting this option want them to understand that more than likely, there will be a change from their current teacher. Uh, students um from multiple CHUH elementary schools may be grouped together. Uh, based on the number of families selecting this option at each grade level. And students will participate in asynchronous specials and have daily interaction with a CHUH teacher and their grade-level peers. Our families who are in Ohio Online have already made their commitment for the semester, and they began in that program on January nineteenth.
Can I just, one thing, as you, as you, I know you may be moving to the next slide, um, this was something that was really. Um, you know, a challenging decision to make because we know it's difficult to to move uh students from teachers. Um, but we also uh know how important it is to have a really um strong academic experience for uh students. Um, and having younger students dial into uh classes was just something. Um, that we know is not feasible, has it, has a lot of challenges other places. And it's something, if my understanding is correct, is uh something that the teachers also indicated would not be ideal. I'm in terms of many of the academic needs of students. I am confident that our principals and our teachers can uh help um navigate this change for families who may have to have a switch. Um, and we will be a hundred percent devoted to working through issues and concerns that parents have. And so I really appreciate um the teachers being willing to really talk with families and and work them through this as well. Just wanted to kind of share that.
So Liz, can I ask a a quick question? So if, you know, from what I understand, there's surveys still out. We don't know the count yet of who's going to be picking which option and how that's going to work. Um, so we.
We haven't, you know, we haven't sent any surveys out, we would.
Okay. Uh, what, what's the process for us to, you know, get those counts? So we'll be able to assign the teachers. I mean, I think ideally you're trying to keep as many. Uh, teachers aligned with their current set of cohorts. I mean, so you 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 really don't want to change. As many as possible, but there's going to have to be some that's going to have to change. Cause you're going to have teachers that are going to be dedicated doing remote and teachers that are going to be dedicated doing in the classroom. Is that, is that accurate? Did I miss, misunderstood?
Yes, we have several scenarios that I'm going to share it when we get um on the next slide, actually.
Go ahead, thanks.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome. Um, so if we, if we think about our current planning, uh, just as Mr. Posh has pointed out. Uh, looking at one teacher in person and one teacher being remote. Uh, for the kindergarten staff, they have a kindergarten aide, so uh those uh, they will work out a schedule within their classroom to provide the assistance that they need. But based on the numbers, students can be combined uh in classes with their in-person teacher. And allow other teachers in the building to take students that um um that are remote. So as an example, Felicia may have um um seventeen kids in her class. And Liz may have only two. Felicia could take Liz's two kids and then she could become that remote teacher. Then based on the number, if the numbers are high uh in buildings. And everyone um has a lot of kids that are returning, then that's when we would look at across the actual. All of the buildings to see who has a low number. So we say start in the building first with the teacher and then go across the district. Now, if we go across the district, that teacher will take teach, will take students from all of the schools. Uh, they could be, you know, from any of our uh elementary schools. And then based on the numbers, once we complete the survey, if possible, we could look at taking all of our in-person students. As well as our students in transportation and put them in a group A or group B. And then they could stay with their um their teacher because we could have all of the kids that are in person in the morning. And all of the kids who are remote in the afternoon, but it will truly be based on numbers.
Can I um ask a question? So this is um, obviously, there's been a great deal of thought put into this, and I really appreciate that. I, 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 I think that you're using, your vision for using staff district-wide, thinking about third-grade students who want to stay home. District-wide is a, is a really great approach. Um, I wonder have, uh, will we be surveying staff as well? To find out what their first wish will be. Um, so for instance, are we, are we looking for, you know, are we asking people who are third-grade teachers? You know, traditionally or licensed that way, is your preference to stay home and teach remote or to come back? Or are we, is the intent just to assign? And then um. Uh, also, I think that this is a a really important option, I just want to say, because we know that we have a number of children. Who's um, you know, for a number of reasons, there is um uh sort of a health fragile person in the home. So returning to school for that child and for that family is a, is a really significant risk. So again, I just really appreciate the the amount of thought, but um. Tell me about the selection of the, of the teacher in front of uh, in front of the computer for the remote learning, please.
And I can say that uh Dr. Lombardo was involved in this process as well, and so the staff members. Uh, within the grade levels have been looked at for an online person and a remote person. They had a continuous conversation with their uh principal in regards uh to that. So they already know who's going to be that person if it come, if it comes down to that particular model.
And that, that person knows it too?
Yes, the teachers already know.
Got it, and um. We often hear that um, and I don't know if this is possible or not, and if it's not, I think it's worth explaining why not. But we have families who who want to know before they make their choice. You know, will Mrs. Gould still be my child's teacher? So can we answer that question? And if we can't, can we explain why not?
I would say that we can't answer that question because we truly need to know what the numbers are. Uh, if there's a way that we could possibly do uh number five, as I've said. Then yes, uh, everyone would still have their same teacher if the numbers work out. Uh, and we can do that based on all the other parameters. We have to do social distance-wise. Having enough students to balance out in groups uh B and A. Uh, but if we can't do uh those things, then we truly have to look at three and four, and that's where. Uh, it comes into that their child will not have the same teacher. So it's truly based on numbers.
We, you know, um. Once we um have a decision from the board on whether or not to proceed. Um, we know that our administrators um will be a resource for families as they have questions. Um, you know, cause they know the needs of their students um and how they progressed, and uh they also know how. Our buildings are organized and teachers work on teams and are, you know, teaching the same curricula, those things. And our administrators are great in support, you know, all this, the instructional work across our buildings, so they. I count on them and I'm confident they can ease those transitions if there are transitions that have to be made.
Next slide. So our middle school hybrid schedule is a two-day hybrid uh type of schedule. Um, here we have students, the one thing I can say about the middle school schedule is that they've always had their nine-period day in place, even in the remote setting. Uh, and they did this intentionally so that when we moved back into or transitioned back into the building. They didn't want students to have to worry about a different transition. Uh, so students uh would come in group A, which is known as uh Heights, would come Monday and Tuesday. Uh, they would uh be in their classes from eight o'clock until three oh five. On Wednesday, all students are remote. Uh, they have a morning check-in at from eight to eight fifteen, whereas uh staff are taking attendance and given directions for the day. And then they have another afternoon check-in from twelve to twelve fifteen. Students uh who are in the Tiger, um. Yes, Tiger group uh come to school on Thursday and Friday. Teachers here wanted to be able to do synchronous and asynchronous work and also be able to. Uh, work concurrently uh with students where it was feasible. Um, just uh the Wednesday, we talked about that, that they would be completing activities and assignments for the week. As well as looking at their virtual small groups where they could get support from Title One Intervention Specialists and Gifted Services. Um, just already talked about the remote students, they're following their daily schedule as well. Uh, participate in it asynchronous and also being able to uh um. Log in for concurrent, uh, we, they would also participate in their unified arts courses uh on Wednesday. And the for student, for families who are in Ohio Online, they have made that commitment. But because we have such low numbers in middle and high school, we are offering parents that opportunity to still have that as one of their selections as well. For the high school, the high school model looks a little differently, and the reason that the staff at the high school thought about the model in this manner. Is that they wanted to provide the lesson to the Tiger group and the Heights group back-to-back. So you won't see a Monday and Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. What you'll see is on Monday, the Heights group comes in person. And on Tuesday, the Tiger group comes in person. So they're teaching that lesson back-to-back as opposed to waiting for the next group on Thursday and Friday. So you have your Heights group in person. Um, there, your virtual group is uh the Tigers. On Tuesday, you have your Tigers in person and your virtual group uh is the Heights group. On Wednesday, everyone is virtual synchronously all together. Both groups are uh being taught virtually in a Google Classroom or Meet. Uh, and then um the same thing happens on Thursday and Friday. And the high school is using their schedule as well uh that they used uh last year. So talked about the remote already, and then here we have Ohio Online is also being offered to families. If they wish to uh select that because we don't have a large amount of students who are in the secondary level in Ohio Online. For the options, they are a half-day model. They are an AM and a PM session. Uh, students uh add options, their alphabet is a little uh different. Um, what happens is the students in the AM session, we go by the last names A through L. And then students in the afternoon session, which happens from one PM to three twenty-five, we go by last names A through H. Students work completely remote, they're not in the building on Wednesday, and then the Tigers group comes. Uh, there's two sessions, an AM session, last names M through Z. And then the PM session, last names I through Z. These students are already online using our Edge Annuity platform and will continue to do that. And they also work in small groups uh with the staff at Options. So as many of you know, we had our in-person PSAT testing at the high school uh on um. Tuesday, January twenty-six, we had a total of two hundred and seventy-eight students that came to the high school to test in person. And I truly want to thank the uh high school staff members that were there, especially our counselors and all of the people. Who uh volunteered. It was a great day and many of the um members uh from the board also went over to assist. We had sixty-one sophomores who uh attended two hundred and seventeen juniors. This is fourteen percent of the sophomore class and fifty-seven percent of the junior class. For sophomores, this was based on advanced registration. Uh, they had a Google form that they had to fill out. In total, this is sixty-four percent of the eligible students. In a typical year, our pers- our participation rate is normally seventy-five percent for eligible students. And students wore masks, they maintained social distancing, uh, they did everything that um they needed to do. It was truly a a great day. Um, some of the student support that we have uh had um our schools provide for uh. Students during uh this remote setting uh has been uh phenomenal. Uh, they have really gone above and beyond with some of the things and really thinking outside of the box. Uh, to and engage our students. We've had one-on-one mentoring for students. Uh, incentive prizes that uh consist of uh them getting uh Tiger Nation gear. Uh, they've had virtual college, college visits. As you know, at the high school, this is College and Career Readiness Week. Uh, neighborhood parades, we've had orientations, where we've had kickball, we've had drive-in movies. Um, there are home visits happening. There are home visits happening from every school that I can think of. We've had book giveaways as well as yard signs for families as well. Principal Fullerman just today, or yesterday, yesterday was actually assisting students in a small group, just having students come in to complete some of the work. So here you can see the barriers that are up in the classroom. You see the students sitting there. Mr. Fullerman is with his mask on. And these students said that they would come every day if, if they could, because they were just so happy to be back into the school. And I'm gonna let Mr. Swager take Ohio Online.
Good evening everybody. Just a quick update about Ohio Online is that that continues to be an option. You heard Assistant Superintendent Gould talk a little bit about that being open as an option. And we did just have a secondary student orientation yesterday to touch base with parents and help them understand some of those expectations. We do know that based on some of the data from semester one, some students need additional time to continue to work through those programs. So we are trying to provide that additional support to make sure that students have everything that they need to be successful. One of the big changes that we have made is to require students to check in at least once a week to the teacher's office hours. So we do know that this is a scheduled program where students and families get a chance to develop their own schedule. But we think that one of those really good action steps and best practices for students to be able to have a touch base, a face-to-face touch base with their teacher at least once a week to do some action planning, to look at their grades, to think about what they might be missing. And really just to do some time management. So that way our students are not waiting until they're so far behind in order to really develop a plan to be successful. So that's all listed there in the video. Anybody that's watching can access this online and they can view the recording of that. Any students still wishing to enroll in Ohio Online, whether it is through the K-5 program with Lincoln Learning or the six-two through twelve program with Edge Annuity, can do so by reaching out to their school principal and counselor. That is the Ohio Online update.
Grab Ms. Liddell Anderson?
Good evening. I'm going to review the timeline for a return to in-person services for our MDAU students. Just as a reminder, they were the one student group that really they were accessing in-person services starting on September twenty-ninth through November seventeenth, until we had the stay-at-home notice from the Idaho Board of Health. So with the timeline, beginning on February eighth, we are proposing that our student groups will return, our MDAU students, in the week of February eighth. They'll maintain the original schedule, which was a half-day in-person schedule. The days for our pre-K, Tuesday and Thursday they attended, and the other days were remote and they were half-days. And for our kindergarten through twelfth grade, they attended Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays. Excuse me. And the time for pre-K through twelve, these sessions were from nine fifteen to twelve fifteen. Then we're gonna transition from the half-day back to full days beginning the week of February sixteenth. So it will be full day in-person for our MDAU students. With pre-K through twelve, we'll be attending Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday in-person. And of course, Wednesday will be remote and the times will vary. For our pre-K through elementary, the instructional day will be from nine o'clock to three thirty. Middle school, eight o'clock to two forty-five, excuse me, and for high school, eight fifteen to two fifty-six. Here's a timeline as we're going to move forward. Following tonight, and given that there is approval for us to move forward, we're going to get a communication memo out to staff in regards to the start date and the next steps pending, like I said, board approval. Beginning tomorrow and through February first, we'll be surveying parents. And that survey of our parents, because it is such a small group, will actually be phone survey. Just like we did last time, we'll be calling parents and notifying them of the start date and asking if they're gonna be accessing in-person services again and their transportation. Beginning on February first, those student names will, of course, go to the Transportation Office and Food Services so that they can prepare. And during the week of February first, similar to the last go-around, Transportation contacts parents, informing them of pickup and drop-off times and locations. Also, on February first and second, and again, this is very similar to the last rollout we had with our MDAU students, there's gonna be a staff information session. On February second, the pre-K through fifth parents will have an information session that they can attend and have questions. And then February fourth, our sixth grade through twelfth grade parents will have an information session if they can attend. And then we'll have the restart again on February eighth. So this is a very similar format that we use to the initial start of in-person services for our MDAU students.
So as we think about our staff wanting to do concurrent teaching, we want to provide them with a concurrent teaching tech kit. In that tech kit, all of our secondary teachers will receive a webcam, an external USB microphone, and a tripod for their webcam. Just want to remind staff, and many of them were aware of this, of our students will be bringing Chromebooks to school. They will be bringing those Chromebooks to school. And so it is very important that we make as part of our protocol that students remember to fully charge their Chromebook each day. We will no longer have carts of Chromebooks available in the classroom since the devices have all been loaned out to students, you know, since we are all one-to-one. If your pre-K to twelfth student still needs to have a district Chromebook, and we encourage all of those who don't have a Chromebook to make sure that they utilize a district Chromebook. And if you are in need of repairs, please contact our IT staff at the designation there. And they are there Monday through Friday from eight to four. And you don't have to have an appointment to come by the office. Students in grades K to twelve will also be issued, issued a zipper carrying case for the Chromebook. This is so that they can protect it as they are putting it in their book bags and making sure that they don't damage anything. We have different sizes because there are different models of Chromebooks. So we have cases that vary in size. And please make sure that students are using the Chromebook that is issued to him or her. Some households have multiple students and devices. And so you can check that by looking at the five-digit number on the device in Infinite Campus. So just make sure that students are using their actual device that was assigned to them. A lot of staff asked about our internet capabilities, and I want to assure them that the district currently has two gigabytes bandwidth connection and recently upgraded our connection. Actually, I want to say in the fall. And so we do not anticipate any of the technical issues to occur when teachers are using the Google Meets when they return to our classrooms. This is one of the questions definitely that came up in our group discussions. Thank you.
All right. And so we'll conclude this presentation with recommendations to, as we prepare to transition to hybrid learning. As I stated earlier, we have moved back the date for staff to report to our district schools and buildings from Monday, February first to Friday, February fifth. Our buildings will be open for staff who would like to come in. I know that people were staying away due to the advisory. We're trying to really limit people being in our buildings. But since that has changed, we are now opening the buildings back up. Again, as Ms. Liddell Anderson stated, we will resume in-person services for our students who are in our MD and AU classes, February eighth. And the reason that we're doing this is also on February eighth, as you'll see in the next point, we'll start to bring in a small group of students for orientations. So they won't be in classrooms. They'll be learning about the building procedures, getting accustomed to returning to, to school. And so we'll have those groups of students coming in. For our MDAU students, kind of a reorientation since they've been in. And so we'll have them starting to connect back with the teachers that they were working with before. And then in terms of students, we will have them start to phase in the week of February sixteenth. If we go to the timeline link, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Gould to just kind of take us through the different grade levels and the recommended phase in for, for student groups. And again, we want to make sure that we have time for, to bring in, to bring in groups, especially our students who are in transition grades or are new to buildings in particular. So.
So as we take a look at the transition hybrid schedule, beginning on Monday, February eighth, you'll see at the elementary level, they're looking at doing pre-K through five orientation, middle school, sixth grade, and then at the high school, looking at ninth and new students to Heights High. That, all of these will be recorded, so they will be available. And as you just go through Tuesday, February ninth, Wednesday, we know is an asynchronous day. And then Thursday, you'll see everyone who's offering their orientation. On February twelfth is a teacher-independent workday, so no school for students. And then on Monday, February fifteenth, is President's Day, and it's no school for students as well. As we move into February sixteenth here, we start to see where remote instruction happens. Then on Wednesday, we have our asynchronous day. And finally, on February eighteenth, the hybrid schedule begins for students in our grade levels. And you're starting to see students phase into the building. You'll see pre-K through five, they're all back. Middle school, six through eight, because they phased in the week before. And then at the high school, they'll phase in nine-ten, nine-ten, nine-three-eleven, and then nine-twelve. And all students will be back in the building by February twenty-fifth.
And so as you'll see from that timeline, that gives time for staff acclamation, staff for student orientation, time for phase in, and then it gets us to the March first, the March first hybrid goal as well. So let me go to the, just our next steps then. One more recommendation, I'm sorry, is to adopt the hybrid instructional framework that Assistant Superintendent Gould walked us through for pre-K, elementary school, middle school, and high school as well. So just want to be clear to the board that that's also part of the recommendation for consideration. So in terms of our next steps, you know, we continue to plan. We will continue to plan. We will continue to plan around implementation of the hybrid model. We will also continue to monitor COVID-19 levels and confirm with the, with the Board of Health. So as I've said from the beginning, the Board of Health has been the guide to my reopening recommendations. If they do not feel that it is appropriate to bring students and staff back in the buildings, I do not recommend it. Because they have indicated that it is appropriate if we stay aligned to the guidance. That is why I feel comfortable making the recommendation. And I certainly, I mean, you may have gotten a sense of that. Suzanne quite a bit. I talked to other, other, you know, people on the Board of Health as needed in our Friday calls when we look at the data and look at the trends and look at the vaccines, look at quarantining. And I will continue to follow up with them as, you know, as new information is shared as well. So state, we stay committed to that partnership. It's very important. And without it, we would not be making, be making this recommendation. And then finally, we do, we will at some point send model selection surveys. So depending on what happens as it relates to this recommendation, we will be sending out surveys tomorrow morning to families so that we get a sense of which families want to participate in hybrid instruction moving forward through the year. And with that, we have concluded our component in terms of the reopening recommendations, and we'll open it up now for for questions. I think, Kayson, you can just stay on the next steps piece because we're not to future board meetings yet.
Do any of you have any questions?
Liz, I have a question that I probably should have asked when maybe our health professionals were here, but there's been a lot of talk about vaccines. There's been a lot of talk about vaccines for K through twelve. What about our early childhood education teachers? Are they eligible for the vaccine as well?
Yes, our early childhood educators who are our district employees for sure are eligible. I believe there may have been, there's some outside district providers who that vaccine accessibility does not come through a district. But for our pre-K teachers, they are district employees. And yes, they will have access to the vaccine.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, what about substitutes? I, I believe I thought I heard they were on the list.
Substitutes have also been included in the count that we gave to the ESC as they have coordinated the vaccine. We gave that information also to so that they are aware that they will need to, you know, partner with us to ensure their, their pool is in that vaccination pool as well. When we get that information, we will also be sending that out to them so that they are aware.
So the, so the counts that you included really include, it's just not teachers, it's, it's all staff members. It's members who are in the building. It's bus drivers, obviously. Partners that we use. So would the Right at School staff, would they qualify?
Right at School is a childcare provider. We did, you know, give some estimates of the vaccine, and I think they have about five employees. I will follow up on that. I'm assuming that because of their affiliation with us, that we can them in our vaccine pool. But I don't want to speak, you know, with certainty without that follow-up as well. I'm gonna assume that we certainly would have counted them in our count.
In our board conversations with other board members locally, they, they've indicated that anybody that goes in the buildings, that's a contractor working with kids, inspecting the buildings. I mean, not like an HVAC contractor that comes in. But, you know, our people that need to be in the building, and of course, staff, they, they.
Correct. That is correct.
And coaches are also included in that count, correct?
Yes, we included coaches in that count as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So when it comes to masks, I think that that's, this is an area where we have some of our staff members are skeptical a little bit about the universal what's the word I'm looking for, enforcement of, of a mask policy. And, and so I just, I want to point out, you know, and I think we've, Liz and I have talked about this, you know, just how critically important it is that when the mask policy is crafted, and, and we, I'm sure, will be looking that over, that it, it really be adhered to district-wide. And that, you know, this is a part, this is one of those things where really week one is critical. Because this is where the culture gets created. And we either create a culture that is committed to this, or we create a culture that is loosey-goosey on this. And, and I think that everything that the doctors said at the start of this meeting really reinforced the fact that, that this, the enforcement of this mask policy must be top to bottom every moment. And, and along those lines, and so A, I'm looking forward to seeing the policy. And B, I think it's, it's really critical that all of the buildings get the same message and the buses and the whole, the whole bit, and that we that our administrative team supports the, you know, the staff when the staff issues, you know, a referral around mask wearing. I think that that is, or or be it a bus driver or a lunch aid or whoever. I think that's really important. But then also, trying to think how to say this. I have heard that there are schools, and I'm not speaking about the Heights schools now. Because I've never heard this about the Heights schools. But I think that we also need to address the fact that as a large employer, we have employees with a great variety of of opinions when it comes to masks. And I would like to talk a little bit about how we craft a mask mandate and enforce a mask mandate among our staff in terms of their personal wearing of of the mask and their adherence to the mask mandate themselves, as well as enforcing it within their own classrooms. Because I'm aware of some classrooms that where it is really not enforced whatsoever. And so not again, again, not in Cleveland Heights. So can we talk a little bit about that? I'm wanting to know more about how the mask mandate will be applied and and demanded of our of our staff, top to bottom. And do we need board policy on this, by the way? Would board policy be helpful on this?
We do have board policy. And and so, I mean, I'm sure that Paul would jump in here, but you know, we have we'll have time built into the transition piece so that we want to make sure that all of our staff in our buildings also get, you know, the building operational training as well, just on how to themselves staff, what those procedures are as they go into the buildings. You know, the expectations, you know, staff where they have lunch, you know, like what does the restroom work, look like for them? And then, you know, what ha, what is the process if, you know, there is someone who is not following the the mask, the masking policy of the district too as well. So, you know, oh, I'm sorry, Paul was going to jump in. So pieces that, you know, the same, we know, we will build those for students. And we do have, you know, a student code of conduct, student code of conduct draft that will be shared with the committee. I believe it's next week to look at the the mask component for students. We'll also have the pieces in place for our staff as well. Paul, I'll turn it over to you.
And just work quickly, in August, that face covering policy was really strong and specific about the mandate of people, students and staff having to wear the mask. It also does talk about discipline will be issued for those that do not wear the mask, staff or students. And it also goes ahead and gives the superintendent the authority if someone is not wearing a mask or a student is not wearing a mask, that they could recommend that they go back to remote, fully remote learning. So it's a matter of understanding the policy and really, as you said, Dan, adhering to that policy. And and we intend to do that.
Thank you.
I I guess maybe I'm an optimist, but I don't feel that there's a lack of of seriousness about the importance of wearing masks in the community. I mean, the parents I have spoken to have said their children are so eager to get back in the building, they will do whatever it takes. And some of the principals I met with yesterday and the day before were expressing similar opinions that, you know, the teachers were eager to see their students again in person. And if it takes wearing a mask and standing six feet apart, then that's so be it, you know? I also think it's easy enough to remind somebody politely to please cover your nose when their mask slips. And rather than assuming that we need to be draconian in enforcing these rules, we set a culture where we look after ourselves and we look after each other. And a gentle reminder is usually plenty sufficient. At least in my experience so far, you know, 10 months of this.
So Malia, Dan, Beverly, you three independently toured some buildings this week. And Jody and I are inspecting, you want to call inspecting, looking at big business, looking at the buildings, you know, seeing the protocols that are set up so we can see this stuff firsthand. But Dan, Malia, Beverly, can you share your thoughts of what you felt like when you went into those buildings?
I was very impressed with the level of detail and the amount of thought that has already gone into very specific things. Traffic patterns, which buildings have narrow hallways that have to be one way versus which buildings have wide hallways where they've painted, you know, a lane divider down the middle, and you've got little paw prints headed in one direction on one wall and little paw prints headed in the other direction on the other wall. You know, custodians and principals have been working together to, that picture is perfect, to put the Purell dispensers at the right height for the age of the kids in the building. The signs have been put down where the kids will read them. I mean, I was very, very impressed. They were not uniform across the elementaries that I visited. There was definitely a sense of the character of each building's leadership team and each building's culture was was visible. So it wasn't like you're imposing a master plan and making it identical in every building. There's variation because the buildings are different from each other. But frankly, I was very, very pleased with what I saw. I thought there were some some serious thinking went in and a lot of implementation. And then some of the buildings have left things to be decided by the the staff when they come back in so that the teachers can make, you know, tweaks and decide if it's better to go this way or that way, whatever, because they're the ones doing it on a daily basis with their students. I mean, frankly, I think we're ready.
Keith, in your own.
Yeah, I have to agree with Molly.
Go ahead, Beverly. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have to agree with Molly. I think I think they did an excellent job. We went to Rock's Meadow and Rock's Hill and Noble. And as she said, they, when they set up, you know, all of these safety measures, it was according to the buildings. And I was just, I was just really impressed on how they put things together and how they made it conducive for the, for not only for the teaching, for the teachers, but for the students. And I honestly think that we are ready as well. And particularly with, I'm getting the information from the presentation tonight. You know, I'm very comfortable. I think we're ready. As far as the mask is concerned, you know, I don't think, I really don't think that a policy is necessary. I think that, you know, you know, we can just share with 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 people that's coming into the building, students, you know, pull your masks up. Because I mean, I think that's that's just a given. You know, like I said, well, like Molly has said, I don't think we, I don't think a policy is necessary.
I I mirror everything that's already been said. I mean, the the detail that has, that they have gotten to is is really remarkable. There's there's plans and and more plans. You know, and and I think also that it will be, you know, they will find the things that work really, really well, and they will find the things that don't. And that's sort of just, that's that's real life, right? You know, everything is is a work in progress. But boy, they are, they have a great head start. And I I'm, I was not expecting what I got. I gotta say, the 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 level, the layers that are present in these plans simply fantastic. My next big thing that I'll be looking for is teachers coming in the buildings and sort of doing a stress test on bandwidth and and technology and, you know, and I think that the plans are all there. I just, I'll be really looking to see, you know, where does it work? Where do we need to make changes? And we will need to make changes. And that's fine, right? Because this is new. So but I will say that that so far, it's it's excellent, really is excellent. And we visited, I visited three, three elementaries the other day.
I'm looking forward to my walkthroughs tomorrow. And I know I was really impressed when Jim and I, back when the MDAU students were in session and Jim and I had spent a day touring all those classrooms, and I was very much impressed. And I I really appreciated going when students were in session because it gave Jim and I the opportunity to also talk to the teachers you know, who were teaching in the moment. And we could find out from them, you know, some ideas of what was working, what wasn't working, and you know, where where things could, you know, be done better. So, you know, hopefully we'll have an opportunity to tour again. I'd like to tour again after we have students in.
Does anybody else have any additional comments?
I don't have a comment about that, but I do have a question for Liz and Team about, I know in the presentation, we had talked about some phases and we had talked about some orientations. I believe there's also several picture days coming up. So how is that going to work with, you know, we've got orientations going on, we've got phasing in happening, and we're going to have picture days or, and I, as a parent myself, we haven't really gotten much information other than, hey, picture day is coming. And if the answer is we're getting more information tomorrow or Monday, that's fine. I just kind of want to know where we're at on that.
I know, Ms. Serena, we're starting picture days that week of February 8th, but I was under the impression that it was for seniors first. And then the other students will come later, but I will make sure that I follow up and get more information.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to thank everyone who participated in the PSAT testing, the students, the parents, the staff who were there. I was not in the building for PSAT, but I know a couple of students who were and a couple of parents whose students were there. And from what I heard from the the kids who were the boots on the ground, they all said that they thought it went really well. They were very impressed with how it went. And some of those kids, it's amazing to hear kids say that taking a four hour test was one of the best days they've had in a long time.
Just want to conconcur, concur with that shout out in particular to Mr. Russell, test organizer extraordinaire.
So I I have a couple asks. I think we do need to stay in touch with the health professionals that we that we were that we heard on the call today. I think we have to understand that our families do need some flexibility. And for those family members that are making a decision today without being in the buildings, we have to be able to find ways of being flexible. So in case they change their mind, we are able to accommodate. I can't say we will be able to accommodate everybody's requests. But I think staff has to be extra careful in doing everything that they can. If a family calls and says, I chose this, it's not working, I really, really wish I chose this other option. I think we really need to do our best to try to accommodate those kinds of situations or remediate. There's a lot of great things that are happening in the buildings to address the remote learning that I know, I mean, for example, Saturday School. I mean, that, I mean, it seems like staff has been very innovative at trying to figure out and find solutions for problems. And I'm hopeful that will actually continue. You know, I'm, I'm good with this plan. And I'm good with it with the assumption that the COVID counts are going down. I mean, that is the biggest indicator that I think we've seen and that we could all agree on. There's lots of chatter that everybody's saying this new variant, you know, masks don't work. Well, that was somewhat debunked this evening. But the real, the real issue is, this is an evolving process. There may be a situation in the future where masks might not work, or something might mutate, and then the cases go up. Then we're going to have to ask our parents and families and staff again to be flexible. If the if the governor says we have to shut down, or the health department turns around and says, we, we think that we need to have a stay at home order again. I look at this thing as a matter of protocols. I mean, we have, we have taught our kids, like if they're ready to go to our class, you line up to go to our class, you use your inside voice. These kinds of things. And these are all sort of protocols. So whatever we can do to orientate our kids and our staff to know how they have to orientate the kids, I think the better. That's what we've had to do as as citizens over the last nine months. I mean, going to the grocery store, taking a leap of faith and going to a Home Depot because you've got to buy a thermal couple to keep your furnace on. I mean, that, I mean, we've all changed the way that we work. I go on a walk, my kids tell me, you're talking to someone too close. It's like, yeah, you're right. Okay. So, you know, the next time I'm on a walk, I'm not talking to someone too close. So I think we have to really learn from this, and we have to recognize it's a work in progress. But we don't have much of a choice but to go back. I mean, I think when you look at the counts and the number of districts, all but one, that agreed, that are agreed to do what the governor put in front of us. If we want to keep our teachers safe and be vaccinated, you need to commit to a March 1st timeframe. I think the plan is good. I know it's a work in progress. You know, I'd like to support it. Is there any other things that board members would like to comment on?
Yeah, one, one thing that occurred to me, listening to Mrs. Gould's presentation in particular is as an outsider, which sometimes I feel like I am now because my kids are out, it all seems extraordinarily complicated. But one thing to realize is that if you are the parent of a student in this age bracket, then you don't need to keep all the other moving parts in random access memory. You just need to keep track of the schedule that's appropriate for your child or your children. And and it's not the same for everybody, right? I mean, that's the thing. It, this, this has been customized with teacher feedback to make the most sense for each of these grade bands. And so it does, it's insanely complicated. I can't figure out how you keep track of all these moving parts, but that's your job, not mine. But I think that it does make sense because what what I've, what I saw in my elementary school visits is is the same thing, customizing things to each building and to each building's culture, customizing things for each age cohort for what makes the most sense for each group of students. And and this is the best we can do. We're also providing options for our families so that they can also customize based on the needs of their individual students, you know? Some, some kids have done really well with the remote and want to stick with it. Some kids have been going insane and need to be back in the building, blah, blah, blah. It's not going to be the same for every child in in a family necessarily. So our job as a public school district is to provide the best options possible for each student. And not every student needs the same thing. And so we're we're doing it. And it's just. we're doing it. And it's just, it's a logistical nightmare. So thank you for your work.
Yeah, I want to express the thanks for the, everybody who's worked on the complexity of this, including, you know, the teachers, the staff who've been involved in the reopening committee. I know Dan and I have been on it. And I know there's been a lot of meetings with a lot of people, a lot of thoughts, a lot of input, a lot of changes. And I really appreciate the fact that the plan calls for allowing, you know, people who want to stay remote to stay remote. People who, you know, need to be back in to, you know, have some back in time. I, I agree with Jim, we're gonna have to stay flexible, things are changing. But I want to thank everyone for all the effort that has been put into this. And it's just, it's, it's mind boggling. This has not been a year that anybody wanted.
And I guess I, I agree with everything, Jody. I, you know, I also think that it's, it is worth recognizing out loud that we have a lot of members of our teaching staff who are uncomfortable coming back. And COVID is scary. And they are uncomfortable for good reason. Because they're putting themselves in front of, you know, a lot of kids and colleagues and this is not a comfortable thing for me to send people where they don't want to be. You know, but I'm, I'm, I'm confident nonetheless, that everything is being done that we can do to make it as safe as, as possible. And I appreciate their moving into an area that brings them discomfort. I appreciate that a great deal. But, you know, I, I will support this decision to move forward. I, I will not do it without the very clear knowledge that people I care a lot about are being made uncomfortable by that decision. And I just have to say that.
I'm going to support the plan. I will say that I'm at the point where if it's not, you know, i- if we were deciding that it wasn't safe for our kids to be in the classroom, then it wouldn't be safe for us to continue with sports. I just, I, I've reached that point where, you know, especially when we're talking about the masks and we're looking at the data. I, I just think that, you know, it, it was a little bit different when the sports were outside, but we've moved into a time of the year where sports are, are inside. And if it's safe to do that, then it's, you know, if we figured that out, we can figure out how to make school as safe as we can.
Well, I think maybe in closing, I mean, one of the things that we've been somewhat maybe fortunate of is we're probably one of the last districts going back. I'm just trying to look at my listing of who's back and who's not. And I think we've been able to learn from these other school districts. And where they've made mistakes, you know, hopefully we're not going to be making the same mistakes. You know, I know that our staff communicates with other districts. Just to glean best practices, you know, the board, you know, basically thanks to Jody has set up these meetings with other board presidents. So we as board members collaborate with other school boards. So we see what they're doing and what's going on. That's incredibly helpful as we make these kinds of decisions. And yes, I need to thank staff and everybody who's worked very, very hard. I want to say staff, it's teachers, administrators, and even you guys, you board members who have already been in the buildings and participate on the reopening committee and, and all that good work. If there's no other comments, can I have a motion?
A motion that we consider reopening the Cleveland University High Schools to our students, staff and community.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I just ask, just for clarity, is your motion to reopen a line to the recommended plan that was shared this evening? Just want to make sure that's clear for the record.
Yes, thank you for that, Liz. Yes, according to the, following the record that was presented in the, in the presentation.
Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Koch.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Frer.
Yes.
Ms. Serena.
Yes.
Mr. Knight.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Onto our next topic, which is about moving our board meetings to be in person as opposed to virtual. I'm not suggesting at this point any kind of motion to make that happen. What I am suggesting is us have a conversation. Here we are asking our teachers and staff members to go in, but here we are fully remote. And I know a board meeting isn't as in a controlled environment as a public board meeting, because if we go back, we have to, it needs to be public. So we need to figure some of these things out. I mean, our next meeting is the second and these meetings have to be noticed. I doubt we'll be able to figure this out by the second, but we should be able to figure it out by the 16th. Well, first of all, I mean, before we walk down this path, I mean, do you, do you guys have any comments?
I hate virtual meetings. That's all I'm going to say right now. I would love to be meeting in person with all of the appropriate safety protocols. Because I'm tired of spending all my time dealing with the technology that doesn't, or at least my technology that doesn't quite work the way I would like it to.
You know, my opinion on this has been, you know, I think pretty well expressed. I've, I've wanted to, for us to be, to have reconvened a while back. We couldn't for a number of reasons. But yes, I agree. I mean, I can't send people into buildings and then in good conscience, myself not going to the same buildings. So yes, I, I want us to direct staff to get us back in. You know, with a, a, a plan that is in accordance with all of the best advice, you know, as pertains to COVID. So yes, please.
Yeah, I, we were working on a plan to do that before the, the Kahuna Health, you know, Board of Health Advisory happened right before the holidays. I mean, we were, we were working on a plan to have the meetings and I, I think it's time to do it. It's been time to do it. We need to do it. I mean, I'm ready.
Yeah, I agree. I'm ready as well. But I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering about, what about the public meeting? You know, the public coming in for our meetings.
Yeah, there's some logistics to figure out about, you know, us sitting in fixed spots with our masks on is easy. But, you know, anybody coming into the building has to follow the building protocols. And, you know, so it's temperature check, it's sign in, it's put your mask on. But there are limits to the number of people we can have in a given room and still maintain our six feet apart. So then it becomes an issue of how do you tell somebody, I'm sorry, you're the 101st person and you can't come in. That becomes difficult.
I think that we can lean on the relationships that Jim was just talking about, that Jody had developed with other neighboring districts. Other districts have been holding meetings in public for a while. And, you know, I mean, and, and then also we've been holding events such as basketball games that have been approved by the Board of Health. And Joe D'Amato has been excellent in, in getting the, the blessing, if you will, of, of the Board of Health. So I think we can do that. And, you know, we always, every room that we're in in our district has a capacity. So there's always been the risk that somebody will, you know, will be the 101st person. So I'm, I'm, I'm very confident that we can, we can do this safely, publicly, all of it. It'll take some work, but thankfully we've got a great staff who will do the work.
You have to pick a big room. You have to have lots of areas for chairs for social distancing. And you have to have, if it's a meeting with public comments, you have to wait to, have to have a way to keep the microphone clean, which means people have to wear masks. And we might have to have, you know, a box of tissues or something that you cover the microphone when you speak and you throw the tissue away in the garbage can next to you when you're done speaking. I mean, those are some of the tips that I had heard when I was attending the school board president's meetings. Malia, you're on mute if you're speaking. Malia, you're still on mute if you're speaking.
I assume you're trying to get off mute, Malia. Well, Malia will be joining us again in a moment, I'm sure. I am a little concerned right now that we are, I mean, our first priority is our students and staff. And here we are having our staff members cycling time to try to appease us so we can meet in person. Because we think the community needs to see us in person. And you know, I'm okay meeting in person. I'm okay going in the building. But I'm going to be going in the buildings tomorrow with Jody. And frankly, when Jody and I were there, we were exposed to an employee that had COVID. Thankfully, it was a very limited amount of time, so it didn't require any kind of quarantining at the time. And we were contact checked with the health department. So we know this happens. We were able to work through it. I'm not afraid to go back in. I'm just concerned right now is, you know, here we're going to be spending cycles to try to get this done. I mean, how big of a priority is this for this board? Is this something? I mean, I, I mean, we have to notice if we're, if we're doing, if we're changing the meeting for February 2nd, we're gonna have to notice that probably tomorrow. And I don't think we're gonna be ready to do that by tomorrow. I mean,
No, we, we won't be ready, but we won't be ready for that. There, there's more steps in the process that can't get done for that, unfortunately. But in terms of priority, Jim, it's a, it is, it is very high priority to me. I feel that we, you can't leave from the rear. We need, we need to, we need to be in the buildings, just as our staff and our students will be.
Okay, I respect that. Anybody? I see a couple heads nodding up and down. Liz? But go ahead, Beverly.
No, I said maybe planning for the 16th, the 16th meeting.
I think that's some, I mean, that's a meeting that there's no public comment on the 16th. So that might be a sort of a dry run to try to figure out what, what public comment would be. You know, of course, public comment is important. People can always reach us anytime. And we're very reachable and we reply. So, but it's, but it's an important process to be, it's an important process of being transparent. Liz, what's your plan of having staff come back and working at the, at the board offices at this point?
It would align with the school staff, teachers, administrators, classified staff in the schools. So that would be February 5th. We would all have the same date.
I see. Okay. So this is what I guess we should do. There's some legal aspects about, about going back, just like there's some legal aspects that we had to, we had to adhere to when we went virtual. And I need to get a better understanding of those and work with our council to figure that out. I think there's additional things that we have to, I mean, there's, there's going to be some logistical issues where we're going to have to lean on Liz and Scott on how to make this work. We're going to have to have ways of dealing with some exceptions, I, I suspect. So if there is, for example, a quarantine, one of our staff members who needs to be at the board meeting, who is, for example, quarantining, or someone like us that needs to quarantine, how do we address that matter? So I think there's just, I mean, this is not, I think, as simple as one would think it actually is. So it's going to take a little bit of work. But if the consensus is it needs to be a top priority, let's make this happen then. So I will work on that. I will probably lean a little bit on Malia, just so Malia is vice president, you understand what is going on. I'd like to use a few of you as just sort of just bounce your feedback. So, you know, maybe Beverly, if I could rely on you and your feelings on, on how to, on what you think is safe. So we can honor that as just sort of a key measurement. And Jody, your relationships with the existing board presidents. I think that would be very helpful to help us figure some of this stuff out. And I can give an update to have, well, I don't know how much of an update I'll have by the second. But I mean, I'll try to let you know where we're at with things by, by the second. Does that seem like a good enough plan for everybody?
Yeah, I think that works.
Also on the second, I was hoping to have an agenda item where we can discuss board priorities. And since we've had a lot going on, they had to throw this meeting in. One of the things that Paul sent us were the, both Scott's and Liz's contracts that has our, their goals, which are our goals. What I'd like to do is spend some time on the second and just go over what those goals are, just at a very high level. And maybe start some conversations. I don't think we're going to be able to come up with a full set of where this needs to go. And, you know, gee whiz, we're in the middle of a pandemic. We are trying to do the best we can just to address those needs. So I think we really need to really, I mean, when we came up with these goals last year, we weren't in this, in this awful situation that we're in. So we may need to really rethink. I mean, I think, you know, Liz and Scott and everybody on our team has really adapted to try to get our kids back in the buildings while also trying to keep everybody safe. And then while we're trying to keep everybody safe, trying to do the best we can to deliver remote learning. So, I mean, a lot, lot, lot has gone on. And, you know, when I hear Liz, the feedback from community members and, you know, people in the medical world who've you spoken to, it just makes me feel that you really do have the best interests of the community at stake. I mean, we have some biased opinions that we hear, loud voices that we hear that basically say, you don't care about students or you don't care about teachers or whatever it may be. I think there's a, a balance that we have to deal with as board members, specifically in representing the community at large, which includes people that aren't even in our buildings. And it includes our family members and it includes the people in the buildings. I'm not trying to say it doesn't, of course, but I think that's where we're at. So Liz, I really want to thank you and thank your staff for all the work you've done. We know the job isn't done yet. We know it's a work in progress. But I think what we've seen is, is, is good work and I really appreciate your efforts.
Appreciate that. None of it happens without a great team and they have a And they have a great team and we have great teams in our buildings and great teams of teachers and staff and administrators. Thank you. Except on behalf of the entire district, for sure.
Any other comments before we close the meeting? Do I have a motion to end the meeting?
I motion to adjourn.
I second.
Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Frere.
Yes.
Mr. Foch.
Yes.
Mr. Nice.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.